All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, for public audience, we've received a number of emails, most of which are related to our budget decisions. The first email is from Mark McGrath. I support the Simsbury Public Library's request for $8,000 to restore its material account to its 2008 funding levels and its request for $5,760 for its technology replacement plan. Before moving to Simsbury in November of 2019, I regularly took my two grandchildren to the children's department. I was struck by the books, the educational toys and programs, and the kid-friendly staff members. After my wife Carol and I decided to move our daughter's family in West Simsbury, the library was one of a number of wonderful things that attracted us here. A retired teacher, I'm now an aspiring picture book writer. Preferring not to be in a public place for too long during this public health crisis, I've been logging on to the library's website requesting specific picture book titles, receiving a phone call and email to tell me the books were ready, picking up the books, reading them, and returning them through the automated window. It's been easy, and when I've had a question, a friendly staff member always has professionally answered my question. In this crisis, I understand the need to keep taxes down, but we're not talking about a lot of money here, and I believe we should support this library just as it has supported us. The next letter comes from Marion O'Neill, who is Chair of the Simsbury Public Library Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for your continued support of the Simsbury Public Library. The library strives to be a community center for the town. It's unique in many ways, especially since it serves all Simsbury residents and demographics. Its focus is not to be a standalone institution, but to be a key component to help the town of Simsbury and its residents meet the goals they have for our community. I would like to ask for your support in two areas for the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget to enable us to continue to provide excellent service to you, our patrons, and the residents of Simsbury. The first is to support the restoration of the children's department materials budget to 2008 levels. This is a request for an additional $8,000. In 2008, the library prepared to move to significantly reduced quarters while the library was expanded. There wasn't room for the existing collection, and patrons stored books in their homes. The purchase of new materials had to be an absolute minimum due to space limitations. As a result, the budget for materials was cut by $8,000. Simsbury reopened and expanded library over 10 years ago, but the budget was never restored. The Simsbury population had grown significantly in the past 13 years, but the materials budget has stayed the same. Digital books weren't widely available in 2008. They are now part of the collection. The library also partners with the Board of Education to provide online access to the books remote learning students would normally obtain from the school libraries. Please help us keep pace with the needs of the community. The second request is to approve $5,760 as part of the six-year technology replacement plan to fund replacement of the computers in the adult reference tech lab, children's and borrowing, public PCs and technology. These computers provide access to Simsbury residents that can't afford their own computers or high-speed access, for those seeking employment as well as those needing access to the world, friends, and associates. In 2018-2019, the computers were used over 84,000 times by patrons. Computer access for all is a need, not a want, for everyone in this digital age. If the computers aren't kept current, software updates and continued maintenance won't be available to those in need at the most. The library is continually ranked as exemplary by independent surveys and comparative studies. It is also one of the lowest in per capita funding. Please support these library budget requests to enable the library to continue to provide excellent service and value to the town and its residents. Thank you again for your support and all time and effort you give to the town. Marion O'Neill.
Hey, Eric. Sorry, everyone. I had technical difficulties there. I'm back.
All right. You want to pick it up with the next one?
Sure. So this next one's from Ann Erickson. Dear Board of Selectmen, Simsbury is very proud of its library and the role that it plays in the lives of its residents. In order to remain a fundamental, dominant, vital, and integral part of the town's budget, I urge you to support this year's proposed budget. The request to keep the $5,760 as part of the library's six-year technological replacement plan is imperative to keep up with the needs of the business community and especially those residents who are completing employment applications. Restoration of funding to the children's material budget to the levels it was in 2008 is both a reasonable and essential request. The children's collection supports the school curricula, and this has never been more important than during this pandemic when remote learning became the norm and the schools were closed. Libraries in general and the Simsbury Public Library in particular have become centers for digital learning in the age of COVID. Whether a resident is seeking help with technology or a student is needing materials to complete a school project, the Simsbury Public Library is an important resource. Simsbury is very proud of its library. Please support this modest and needed budgetary request. By doing so, you will be enabling the Simsbury Public Library to continue to be recognized on the state and local level as well as to remain an important and much-used resource for its residents. Sincerely, Ann Erickson.
This next email came from April and Michael Smith. Our homes have increased slightly in value, but we have not recouped since the drop in 2008. Does the town ever consider the fact that most of the people that live in Simsbury are not union employees and do not work for the government? Therefore, we are dependent on the health of the economy for our raises. My husband and myself have not received a raise in 20 years, and we've never received a cost of living raise or a bonus. I currently work part-time and make less than an hour than I did in 2009. Why are union employees getting raises each year while the rest of us are suffering from a global pandemic? How do you justify this? Signed, April and Michael Smith.
Next one, to the Board of Selectmen. As a member of the Simsbury Public Library Board of Trustees, I'm writing in support of two budget requests for the library as part of the 21-22 town budget. First, the library has requested $8,100 to restore the line item reference materials under the Children's Services section of the library expenditures budget to the 2008 funding levels. This funding is essential to keep our books and digital content current and engaging to young readers. Refreshing the children's materials this year is more important than ever, as these materials are all supporting school curricula, and the children have already experienced prolonged educational disruptions due to school closures and remote learnings. Although this request is relatively modest in the scope of the overall town budget, your support will demonstrate our community's commitment to our youngest members and ensure that families can access engaging, refreshed material that supports children's literacy. Second, the library has requested $5,760 as part of the town's six-year technology replacement plan to fund the upgrade of the personal computers and technology. In 2018-19, the library's public technology was used over 84,000 times. Critically, many residents use the library's PCs to complete employment applications, making it imperative that the library technology be current in order to keep up with the new employment application software and functionality. Again, this request would be modest expenditure to the town, but would provide a meaningful benefit to our community, especially members who do not have ready access to technology that is necessary in today's world to find employment, apply to schools, or access information online. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Amber Abou.
Abou, yep.
Abou, there you go. Simsbury Library Board of Trustees. Thank you.
This next email is from Joan Coe. I'd like to remind the Board of Selectmen they've been elected to represent the people's voice. Concerns brought up at public audience should not be filtered through the town manager's office by Town Manager Maria Capriola. Since the Board of Selectmen is a policy body of the town and Town Manager Maria Capriola is the executive to implement the policies, it's the Board of Selectmen who decides what to show at their meetings for open government, not Town Manager Maria Capriola. Town Manager Maria Capriola has a reputation of being vindictive, retaliatory, abuses her power, and is a control freak, using her power to control the Board of Selectmen by refusing to show my picture attachments at Board of Selectmen meetings. The Board of Selectmen are cheerleaders for Town Manager Maria Capriola for fear of her vindictiveness. Town Manager Maria Capriola has consistently stated that employees should be certified in their fields. However, Town Manager Maria Capriola is not an ICMA credentialed manager as are Town Managers Matt Hart, Wes Hartford, and Brandon Robertson, Avon. Is the Board of Selectmen going to require Town Manager Maria Capriola to get her certification? At the February 22nd, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting, Deputy First Selectman Sean Askam thought the issues concerning the police department with Chief Bolter's prosecutorial discretion regarding the conclusions of internal police investigations were before his tenure, and therefore Chief Bolter could not assume the blame, is incorrect. All the internal police investigations were initiated under Chief Bolter since he was appointed in 2018. Deputy Selectman Sean Askam cannot hide behind technicalities that are untrue. Now that it has been determined that Chief Bolter has assumed all responsibilities for the internal investigations and their conclusions, will Deputy First Selectman Sean Askam confront Chief Bolter with the concerns of the public? Deputy Sean Askam is the Board of Selectmen liaison to the police department. The police internal investigation regarding the vandalized footlocker was inconclusive, although many allege that they are aware of police officer that lied. According to testimony in the hearing of a terminated police officer, Chief Bolter stated that lying is grounds for termination. Do these standards apply to Chief Bolter? I've received many pages of content through my FOI requests for all communications between Ed Kaczynski, IBPO National Representative, and Town Manager Maria Capriola. It seems quite unusual that Town Manager Maria Capriola has a running dialogue with Ed Kaczynski, the IBPO National Representative. In a complaint written October 25th, 2019 from Ed Kaczynski, the chief Nick Bolter, Town Manager Maria Capriola and the Police Commission, the subject is the Internal Affairs Investigation/Complaint. It states, "I'm writing this on behalf of the IBPO Local 458. It's our stance that during the termination hearing of Sergeant Trombley, Chief Bolter was untruthful in his testimony, which he provided under oath and penalty as perjury. Within the sworn testimony, Chief Bolter answered a question posed by counsel that directly contradicts memorandum that Chief Bolter sent to local union president Gary Gray on May 17th, 2019. Accordingly, we demand that an Internal Affairs Investigation into the conduct of Chief Bolter be conducted under General Order 52-1. As such, we further request that General Order 52-1, Section D6, this investigation be conducted by an outside agency. Has the police department investigated these serious allegations or were they ignored, with the overseers abdicating their responsibilities? Has Town Manager Maria Capriola asked for a complete investigation and reported her findings to the Police Commission and the public? Has Ed Kaczynski received answers to any and all questions he posed in his FOI requests? Town Manager Maria Capriola presented the town budget to the Board of Selectmen at the February 22nd, 2021 meeting. The mill rate will be increased from 37.09 to 37.26. This is without the fire department. With the grant list increases, revenue is higher, lowering assumptions on tax collections. There should be a 0% increase in the budget and no additional permanent positions. Giving $22,000 to the Spirit Council to collect data and provide an analysis of the data should be used for mental health and developmental issues with data and analysis that have inflicted possibly permanent damage from the pandemic that needs long-term professional intervention. Many of the buildings that will become vacant due to changes in the workplace could be repurposed to increase facilities for outpatient and long-term psychological intervention. There's an increase in family violence, children with psychological issues that have increased due to the pandemic, and family issues resulting from alcohol and drug dependencies. The developmentally challenged have had major setbacks that would require intense intervention. Addressing these mitigating issues should be priority one. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter @JoanCo and on Facebook.
Thanks, Eric. Next one is, Dear Simsbury Board of Selectmen, I am writing as a patron, mother of three young library patrons, and a member of the Library Board of Trustees in support of both the 2021-22 library budget requests. The 8100 request to restore children's reference material is crucial as it supports our school curricula and invests in the future of our young Simsbury residents. The $5,760 request as part of the library's technology replacement plan is also imperative, as many residents rely on technology services for many uses, including employment and business needs. With full understanding that this is a time when financial resources are limited, I thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Heather Goats, Simsbury Library Board of Trustees.
Hey, thanks, Sean. And we do have some in-person public audience. Jerry Toner, are you with us?
I am.
Well, I was gonna say see you, but it's good to hear your voice.
It's good to be here as well. You can hear me?
Yes.
Eric, thank you. And thank you to the board for allowing me to speak tonight. First of all, before I talk, I just want to thank the board and thank Maria, especially in her staff, for just a phenomenal job I think you've done through just an unprecedented time. And I think the job you've done for the residents is just phenomenal. And I want to, you know, just take a moment to thank you all. My reason for speaking tonight is twofold. One, I know you have an item you'll be addressing regarding the donation from the Friends of Simsbury Farms in the supplemental appropriation request. Just for some background, I also served on the Friends of Simsbury Farms. At our December 7th meeting, we voted to accept a donation and a commitment from David McElroy for up to $25,050 and 50% of the construction costs of the lighting, to construct lighting at the basketball courts of Simsbury Farms. You may recall, three years ago, Mr. McElroy and his family made a significant donation that actually triggered that project, which the town also provided funding for. I think three years later, you know, everyone is thrilled with the result, the use that the courts get. It's just been a tremendous addition to that facility. At their meeting, the Friends did vote to appropriate $12,000 as their share towards this project, with the condition that the town pick up the remainder of the construction costs. So I'm calling or I'm speaking to you to ask you to consider accepting our donation and also providing the funding out of your capital reserve fund so that that can happen this spring. I understand there is other construction going on at the complex with lighting work, so there certainly would be efficiencies with doing it at this time, let alone getting another season in that it could be, they could be used for. So respectfully request that you consider that. I think it would be a great addition, another great addition to the Simsbury Farms complex. And, you know, hopefully that will be able to move forward. Secondly, and with respect to your budget deliberations that you're in now, I'd like to request you have a position within the Park and Recreation Department for a facility maintenance technician. I know it was discussed at length last year. It was not funded, but I would ask that it really be given every consideration. I know the Park and Open Space Master Plan, which was recently completed, recommended the addition of two to three staff members in the park maintenance area. And I can say, in my past life, my time with the Park and Recreation Department, I was there when we did lose some of these positions. And since then, there have been many parks, fields, facility that have been brought online without the addition of any staffing. I think it's certainly to Tom Taborisky and Orlando Cassiano and their staff for the great job that they've done in maintaining these facilities, but nonetheless, they are understaffed. The addition of this position is a start. It's by no means a solution in its entirety, but it is a start. We take great pride as a town in our parks and facility, just like we do our library and our schools, but we need to maintain them. We need to keep them safe. And I think this position will go a long ways towards doing that. I also understand there is a line item for staff training and professional development. You know, the certifications that you're looking at, I think need to be, they're all safety certifications that our park maintenance staff really need to have. Aquatic facility, rink technician, pesticide applicators, license and certified playground safety inspector. These are all just are safety-related areas that staff needs to be trained in and be certified in. So I would certainly ask that you consider both of those. And again, I appreciate your time and I appreciate all the effort that the board and the staff are putting in. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for being here tonight, Jerry.
My pleasure.
Any other, anyone else on the meeting wanted to speak in public audience tonight? Okay, so we will then move on to the First Selectmen's report. And there were two items I wanted to touch on. The first is COVID-19 vaccine information. Currently, the state is scheduling vaccines for people who are 55 and older. Vaccine eligibility is scheduled to expand to people 45 plus, starting on March 22nd, just a couple of weeks away, 35 and older on April 12th, and then 16 and older on May 3rd. Groups that are currently eligible also include healthcare personnel, medical first responders, residents of long-term care facilities, and many educators and childcare providers. Registration through VAM, so if you have an email address, you can register for a slot for a vaccine at ct.gov/covidvaccine. Anyone who needs assistance scheduling a vaccine, you can call the Simsbury Senior Center at 860-658-3273. Also give an update on our town's budget process. Budget information is being aggregated on the town website on the finance page. On Saturday, March 6th, the Board of Selectmen held an all-day budget workshop, and the slides for that workshop are also posted on that page online, showing a department-by-department view. For the second year in a row, Simsbury experienced significant growth in its grant list of 2.94%. This growth helps to offset increases in the mill rate. Still, this is shaping up to be a particularly challenging budget year. There's consensus among our budget-making boards that any tax increases need to be kept to an absolute minimum, yet there are significant investments needed in equipment, buildings, and personnel just to maintain what we have today. At tonight's meeting, so this is for Monday, March 8th, the discussion will be focused on the town's operating budget. Then we have a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March 10th, and the conversation then will focus on the capital budget. This year, the capital budget contains a proposal to construct a new Latimer Lane Elementary School. It's referred to as renovate as new. If this project were to move forward, it would mean making difficult choices in our capital improvement plan to ensure that debt service remains within the Board of Finance's guidance. So again, upcoming dates, March 10th is a special meeting that the Board of Selectmen will be discussing the budget and particular capital needs, starting at 5:30 PM. March 16th, the Board of Selectmen will be presenting its proposed budget to the Board of Finance at their meeting at 5:45. And then April 6th, the Board of Finance has scheduled its annual budget hearing at 5:45 PM. This process requires public participation, and you can do so without leaving your home. All of our Board of Selectmen meetings are streamed at SCTV's YouTube channel, and they're broadcast on SCTV's government channel, Xfinity Channels 96 and 1090, and Frontier Channel 6071. If you'd like your comments read in an upcoming meeting, you can send them to Erica Butler, ebutler@simsbury-ct.gov, or you can join our virtual meetings and share your comments live by registering with Tom Fitzgerald, tfitzgerald@simsbury-ct.gov. And I'll turn it over to Maria, who has the Town Manager's Report.
Great. Thanks, Eric, and good evening, everyone. Starting off with our coronavirus update, we are currently at orange status for the COVID alert system. This is the second consecutive week we are at orange status. We're actually very close, if we continue to trend downwards, to transitioning to yellow status. You may recall, we were at the highest level, which is the red alert status, for many months. So this is good news to see us continuing to trend downwards. As of February 27th, we had 10.3 cases per 100,000 residents, which was down from 11.4 cases the previous period, and our positivity rate has decreased to 1.8%. We're currently at 36 positive cases over our most recent two-week period, which is a small decrease from the previous period. The Farmington Valley Health District is reporting that social gatherings and household spread are continuing to be sources of spread for the virus. Some preliminary data that we have regarding vaccinations is reporting that as of March 1st, a little over 5,000 of our Simsbury residents have received at least their first dose of the vaccine, or just under 20% of our population in town. 91% of people over the age of 75 in town have received their first dose, as well as 76% of our residents between the ages of 65 and 74. To date, the Farmington Valley Health District has administered just under 5,300 vaccinations, 4,200 and some change of those are first doses, and they've administered just over 1,000 second doses. They did begin vaccinating school staff on March 6th, and they're continuing to hold three weekly clinics within health district towns. And beginning April 7th, the Simsbury Public Library will be hosting a weekly vaccination clinic for the health district. So we're really thankful to the library and our public work staff for helping to make that happen, as well as our emergency management director, Mike Barry. In regards to the organization, for the month of February, we had a total of five staff members that were quarantined due to coming into contact with a person either at work or outside of work who had, in fact, tested positive for the virus. We were very fortunate. During February, we had no staff members positive. So far, for the month of March, we have had one staff member that has needed to be quarantined and two staff members who have tested positive. A quick update on our municipal services. We are currently open for limited walk-in hours for both town hall and the library. We are evaluating expanding our walk-in hours for town hall beginning the week of April 5th. We are, again, sort of working through that and logistics with that. As soon as we have more information, we will be releasing that. And very good news to report, the library is a bit further ahead in their planning than town hall, and they will be expanding Tuesday walk-in hours until 8:00 PM, beginning March 23rd. And then, starting the week of April 5th, they are going to extend their Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday walk-in hours to their normal hours of operation prior to COVID. So little by little, we are definitely getting back to normal with our walk-in hours. And just a reminder for some members of the public, we do, from time to time, get questions about, you know, why are we open, you know, limited hours around these days? And there are a number of reasons, but a couple of them are, you know, we are really doing our best to keep our buildings incredibly clean, especially when we're open to the public and we have additional foot traffic coming in. So we've developed a method of ensuring that town hall and the library are open to walk-in visitors on alternating days. So our very, very small facility staff can do their best to help keep everything clean and not only keep our employees safe, but our members of the public safe as well. We are still alternating workdays in the office. Again, we are providing essential services to the public. We certainly don't want to have to shut down an essential service or an essential department. So we've been rotating staff members sort of in team concepts to help keep our workforce as healthy as possible, just again, to ensure that we are not shutting down any of our essential services. So again, very happy to be looking at expanding our walk-in hours again, but wanted to provide a bit of background again on some of those reasons why we're not fully open at this point in time. All right. Moving on to Board of Selectmen business, I wanted to announce that Selectwoman Baddos and Selectman Peterson have made plans to reconvene the short-term rental work group. So thanks to them for that. They have meetings scheduled for April 8th and April 26th at 8:00 AM. Those will be streamed. And again, this work group had been delayed due to the pandemic. And I just wanted to highlight for you and your packets this evening, under the communications section, we do have an excerpt of Aquarian's March newsletter. There's an excerpt about the upcoming water restrictions that are going to begin for irrigation purposes. Those measures will take effect in Simsbury beginning April 1st. What we have done is asked Aquarian to come in and conduct a presentation at your next meeting on March 22nd in advance of these new restrictions going into place. We, again, just really want to help raise some awareness about that. Aquarian does plan to do a print campaign, digital campaign, mailers to folks to really, again, help educate folks about these new guidelines that will be in place. For our department news and notes from Culture Parks and Recreation, summer camp registration is going to begin, I'm sorry, is actually now open, and our pool passes go on sale Saturday, March 13th. So folks can go to simsburyrec.com for additional information. And the golf course will be And the golf course will be opening soon, weather permitting. And we're excited to remind folks that Shea Hospitality Group will be the new operator up at the golf course. They're busy planning their menu and working to get the space ready. And they are asking for help, I believe, in naming the new restaurant. So be on the lookout for email announcements from the golf course and the Culture Parks and Recreation Department regarding that. And from engineering, we were just informed that the Farmington River Trail and Stratton Brook State Park between Stratton Brook Road and Old Farms Road will be closed to the public from March 15th through March 19th. This is closure due to some work that they are doing as part of their centralized water treatment project. There's some tree removal work, et cetera, that is going to, again, unfortunately have to close the bike trail for about a week. There may be other periodic closures throughout 2021. And Aquarian has provided a phone number if people have questions about that work. And an announcement from planning, our planning director, Mike Livid, was recently selected by FEMA to serve on their fiscal year 20 BRIC Qualitative Reviews Panel. This group of folks is charged with reviewing BRIC grant applications throughout the country. So he will be essentially helping to score applications, which is really neat. You may recall, we actually applied for the BRIC grant for the sewer treatment facility recently to raise the perm. So again, that's, I think, a really nice honor and a testament to his skill set in this area. So congratulations to Mike. And lastly, from Public Works, I know that many of our board members are aware of this, but our water treatment facility has been nominated by ELGL, which is a local government organization, for its annual NOPA Award, which honors municipal services. And it's kind of a fun, the March Madness-type bracket. We're up against an aquarium in a very large metro area, so every vote counts. Today is the last day to vote. I wanted to put a plug out there for our great folks at the treatment facility. Tony Piazza and his team just worked tirelessly on our behalf. They do really great things. They've done some amazing sustainability projects. And I'm so glad we're able to recognize their work. And we have links to where you can vote on our Facebook page, our Twitter account, our website. And again, wanted to just remind folks that today is the last day to vote for the first round. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Under Selectment Action, item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective March 8th, 2021, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $6,157.48 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute the tax refunds?
Second.
I heard Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A couple of items from Simsbury Farms. Item B is a generous donation that the town has received toward the construction of lighting at the basketball courts at Simsbury Farms. The Friends of Simsbury Farms would be donating $36,000 toward the project. And the proposal for staff would be to cover the remaining $13,000 would come from the Capital Reserve Fund. And completing the project this year would allow us to leverage this generous donation, saving the town considerable money. I wanted to see Tom Dubersky if there was anything he wanted to add on this item.
I appreciate that, Eric. I think it's well-stated, what you just said. You know, we do have the lighting phase, one of the lighting projects of the farms that will resume work within the next few weeks. And there is significant savings in having, in doing it now versus having to re-mobilize that crew at a different time. Certainly, we want to keep Simsbury Farms as neat and tidy as possible. So if we only have to dig once, it's certainly a boon to us for us to do that now. We get it done before the busy season, rather than another time down the road. Those courts have been extremely popular, as Jerry mentioned before, extremely popular the three years I've been here. From the first, from the soon as the snow melts until, you know, right through the end of the season, they were just used nonstop. And I think this would be a great resource and amenity to our residents. And I hope you will approve, accept the donation and approve the funding request as is.
Thanks, Tom. Are there questions from the board on this item?
I had a quick question. They said it was, it's in the capital plan somewhere for '22, '23. Just, could you just give me an idea where that is? Just.
I'm not sure exactly what year it is, but I will tell you.
Okay.
The Phase 2 process, Phase 2 of the lighting project was basketball court lighting, the tennis court parking area lighting, and the golf exit road lighting. Those were, if you remember last year, when Jeff and I came forward, I believe, our bids came back high, and we weren't able to get the entire project in this year. So it was, the project was basically split into two at that point.
Okay. So then it just happens this year, we approve it, and it's not out there waiting?
Well, yeah, the basketball court, the basketball court lighting would be finished with this, with this $13,000 in funding from the town.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion effective March 8th, 2021, to accept a donation in the amount of $36,000 from the Friends of Simsbury Farms to be used for the construction of outdoor basketball court lighting at Simsbury Farms? And also to approve a supplemental budget appropriation of up to $13,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund for the construction of outdoor basketball court lighting at Simsbury Farms?
So moved. Aye.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Staying at Simsbury Farms for item C, in your packets is a proposed professional services agreement with John Varengia, whose contract to operate the golf course Pro Shop ended last year. Staff conducted an RFQ process to solicit proposals. Tom, what would you like to add on this item?
I would just like to say that John Varengia has been with us for over 20 years now. He is an asset, him and his team are an asset to the operation we have up at the golf course. We repeatedly get positive feedback on a daily, on a daily basis about the work that he and his team do up there. And I believe the success of our golf course is due in large part, not only to the funding the town has provided in the past, but the work that John and his team do up there. We did put this out to, out to bid, so to speak, with an RFQ process. John was the only response that we received. His proposal was certainly favorable. He's been basically working on the same contract for the last 15 years, while a lot of the cost that he has, insurance, minimum wage for the people he employs, has gone up. I think the contract we're proposing is fair. It's a good agreement for both sides, and we hope that John will be with us, not only for this five years, but another five years as well, hopefully.
Thanks, Tom. Other questions? Is there a motion effective March 8th, 2021, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute the proposed agreement for the Simsbury Farms Golf Course Pro Shop with John Varengia?
So moved.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Item D is a letter of support for the Farmington Valley Health District's proposed budget. You know, Farmington Valley Health District is an example of a regional collaboration that in the past year has been front and center in our response to the COVID-19 pandemic. They've taken on significant new responsibilities on top of the work that they already do. And in your packets is a letter of support for their upcoming budget. The Health District's budget calls for an increase in Simsbury's contribution of a little more than $15,000. This is the per capita cost to member towns increased from $6,050 to $7. I want to, you know, thank staff for preparing this letter and just open it up for feedback or questions from the board. Anything? Okay. Is there a motion effective March 8th, 2021, to authorize Town Manager, the Town Manager's Office to send a letter of support to the Farmington Valley Health District regarding their proposed fiscal year '21, '22 budget?
So moved, and with our thanks for this past year.
I'll second it with our major thanks.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. And speaking of budgets, this takes us to our final item under Selectment Action, which is the town's budget. And we were, you know, on Saturday, we were working through a PowerPoint deck that goes department by department. And I thought that staff had done a nice job toward the end of the deck, outlining some key decisions and some areas that we were going to talk through, including the outside agency funding requests that we didn't have time to get to on Saturday. So I thought that we could, we could start there, and then, and then really focus on the operating budget tonight, leaving the capital conversation for Wednesday. So who would be ready to share their screen, Maria?
Melissa, would you be able to share the screen, or would you prefer me to?
I can do it. Give me one.
Sure.
Great. And while you're doing that, I'll just do a quick recap regarding a couple of operational items that you had flagged from Saturday. One item for us to consider at the end of the meeting, when you start kind of working through your list, was again, possibly essentially reallocating the $25,000 decrease from the registrar's budget to then do an operating transfer out to the CNR Fund to sort of build up an account there for future potential needs that they may have if we see some changes to some of our election laws. And the second item that you all had flagged was that if you would like to proceed with the temporary help for the assessor's office, it'd be to do an offsetting revenue, since it was anticipated that, again, that there would be offsetting revenue to cover the cost of that position. And you had also asked us to send you information on the cost per patrol officer. We did forward that information to salary and benefits and associated costs. And then, another follow-up from Saturday, which was capital, a little bit ahead of the meeting on Wednesday, but we were able to email out to everybody today an updated revenue, source of revenue chart for the CNR Fund. And we hope that's a bit more, a bit more clear to folks. Appreciated the feedback on that. Great. All right. Thank you. So I think we're going to mostly focus on the operating budget tonight. And if we could scroll ahead, Melissa, to the Board of Finance slide? Great. Almost there. Excellent. Thank you so much. So this was the first of the discussion points that we had for wrap-up regarding the operating budget. And you may recall during tri-board that the Board of Finance had set guidance for the expenditure increase to the town budget of 1.5%. With maintaining level services, we did not hit the 1.5%. We were at 2.49. It's actually a bit lower than what we thought our operating costs were going to be when we provided that number during tri-board. If we wanted to attempt to hit that number, it would require $262,000 in terms of a decrease to the town government budget. In terms of, you know, size of that, you know, for me, that's more than just trying to trim around edges and tweaking accounts that are already really lean. Again, that's the equivalent to us for one of our smaller municipal departments. The Town Clerk's Department as a whole, their budget is less than that amount. The Engineering Department budget as a whole is just over that amount. So just to give a little bit of perspective in terms of what would be needed, it really would be service reductions. You know, thinking about if there would be programs, you know, you would want to eliminate. If you'd want to shorten up hours of operation when things do return to normal, whether it's for the senior center or the library. These are certainly things I'm not advocating for, because I know maintaining services have been very important to you all. But again, to really hit that number, it would require, again, probably service reductions. So again, just wanted to frame that, frame that for you, to see if you all had a willingness or a desire to try and hit that target.
I mean, I think that target was set when we had a different understanding of revenues, right? Not a one-to-one correlation, but I'd imagine if we all had November back, I think the number would have likely been different. I think, you know, the Board of Finance's goal at the time, right, was to minimize or eliminate any tax increase. So I think the budget that we're debating this evening is, it already either A meets that goal or comes unbelievably close to meeting that goal, you know, within a few, you know, dollars a month, right? So I personally feel like we're in the ballgame of what I would assume updated guidance would be.
Yeah, I think that's fair. For anyone watching, I mean, our grant list growth was almost twice as what had been predicted back when we did tri-board in November.
I would also agree with that. Those statements, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay.
Okay.
I guess without any further conversation, we can continue.
All right. Thank you. All right. So the next policy question for you all to consider is the outside agency funding request that we received. To recap from Saturday, we received two new requests this year. One was from Gifts of Love, and the second was from A Promise to Jordan. And then we received requests from three agencies to increase our contribution to them. One is for McLean Meals on Wheels. I will flag for you that that particular outside agency contribution that is actually funded currently by one of our trust funds, from the Belden Trust, essentially. The other two requests that we received were from SCTV to increase the contribution from $10,000 to $25,000. And the other request was from the Chamber of Commerce, requesting an increase of $2,500 from $7,500, where they are currently, to $10,000. Everybody else essentially is level funded, with the exception, I believe, we spoke about this on Saturday, the North Central EMS Council, that's essentially billed proportionally on population, very similar to the health district. So because our population went up a little bit, a very modest increase of about $750 there. And so if we go to the next slide, again, this is sort of a summary of your new requests versus the requested increases. And the questions for you would be, do you want to fund any of the new requests? And if so, at what level? And do you want to fund any of the requested increases? And if so, at what level?
Maria, can I just go back to something that you had mentioned before, just to make sure I understand? Can you flick back to the previous slide? You had said that the McLean Meals on Wheels was funded through Belden Trust?
It is funded currently through the trust, correct.
So would that additional $2,000 come from operating or come from the trust if we move forward with that?
You know, it's a really good question. We did have our budget planning meeting with the trustees recently. We had not included this in the estimates. And we'd probably have to go back and take a really, you know, good look at what we have for balances. You know, some of our trust accounts were very, very heavily used this past year due to the pandemic, whether it was supporting our food programs or, you know, helping to support emergency needs of some of our residents for things such as shelter and things of that nature. So I know that our accounts aren't necessarily as robust as they've been in the past. And I think that's just something we would have to kind of go back and take a look at to really see if, you know, the general fund would pay for that, if the trust could pay for that, if perhaps we could, you know, perhaps we could split the cost. But again, we could look at that more closely if you have an interest in that.
Okay. Maria, it's Chris. So I don't exactly understand what you just said, and maybe you were very clear. But I mean, just for the folks out there, so just, let's just break this down. So when you say something is funded by the trust, that means that that program is initially, has a, as part of its design, it's the stewardship says this trust funds this program. So it's sort of locked in to get its funding from there. But if the trust is not having real new dollars put in from a donation standpoint, and/or its investment income is not growing to the point where it has to cover its obligations, stated obligations, i.e. the allegations of the McLean Meals on Wheels, because that's essentially only where that program can get its money from, then we have to make an appropriation into, to make that trust whole to support its obligations that it has signed on to. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, sort of, sort of. I mean, again, I think that we, you know, we wouldn't want to over-commit the trust funds, because we certainly want to have to come to, you know, you all and ask for the general fund to support that. So what we do is we do meet on a periodic basis with the trustees. We monitor, you know, the revenues coming in, the expenditures going out. We also plan on an annual basis for budgeted expenses, so we try to be really careful about that. Again, just to ensure that we wouldn't have to come back to, you know, Meals on Wheels, because we committed. you know, Meals on Wheels because we committed $5,000 spend, but we're going to fall short of that commitment. That, that's the type of thing we try to, to avoid. So we're just really careful to live within our means.
So Maria.
That was going to be funded then, I guess, before we say yes or no to that.
Jackie, I think you might have cut out for me just to bet. You said yes or no before we.
I would like to know if that would be funded first, before we say yes or no.
Oh, if the Darling Trust could absorb that additional $2,000?
Yes. And do we know that they would do the $5,000?
The, the $5,000 is already committed to you. So that's been an ongoing expense for quite some time. But we could definitely do a quick analysis and, and get back to you all probably, um, you know, by Wednesday night prior to budget adoption to let you know if it's something the Darling Trust might be able to absorb. And then we could also reach out to the trustees to see if they would be comfortable with the increased appropriation.
I think that'd be a good way to do it. I'm sorry, Wendy. I think I cut.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to reiterate the VNA is like a standard amount that we have, we give, correct? Okay.
Right. Yeah, that is, at least since I've been here, I don't believe that that $40,000 has increased for the VNA. And I'd have to ask Amy or Kristen to, to double, to double check if I'm accurate on this. But I believe that a portion of our VNA contribution comes from one of our trusts and the remainder of that comes from the general fund. But I think that's been a longstanding arrangement. But I, I believe Kristen or Amy could confirm that for us.
Um, correct. We, we fund $33,000 from the general fund and $7,000 from the trust. That's the, the split.
Are, are we looking to make like our decisions here and just, just talk about what we think?
Yeah, I think we should have some conversation around it.
You gonna start?
I'll, I'll jump in. You know, I, I've struggled with this in my time on the board because I think every organization that's here is, is, is very deserving of everything that, that they're asking for. But for every organization that's here, there could be other organizations that, that aren't here, that we could be funding, that are serving our residents. You know, in light of the challenging budget situation this year, my preference would be to maintain flat funding for the organizations that we're already funding with the, with possible exception of the Meals on Wheels program and, and the North Central EMS Council, which is, you know, requesting a modest increase. That's my initial thought, but I'd like to open it up to hear what others think.
Well, I, I was going to say that I feel the same way. And it's nice that Hartford Interval House asked, did not ask for more, they asked for less this year. Um, and that Main Street maintained flat with their, their requests this year. It did go up last year, but they've done a lot this year, so I'm, I'm good with keeping it. But I would stay with the same levels. I agree. I don't think this is the year to add new, um, you know, nonprofits in here. And that, you know, personally, I've donated to quite a few on here and I'm hoping that people out there will, will follow through and do that on their own. So you can give where you want to give at your own, you know, make your own decisions.
Thanks, Wendy. Anybody else?
And I support level funding. I think that, that's a sound argument, Eric.
What are your thoughts?
Eric, this is Mike. I, I reluctantly end up at level funding. My, my concern is for, for the last year, SCTV has kept us able to talk to our residents. If, if that were not an option, that would have been really difficult. And, you know, uh, that, that's my only dilemma. I'll be very honest. I, I understand about level funding. It's, this is just the beginning of the tough decisions we have to make. So just wanted to share that.
Hey, Eric?
Yeah.
I agree with, I think it sounds like everybody so far with the level funding. Just going back, one of the things for the Chamber of Commerce last year, we did $5,000. And then what we did was, I believe, um, 2,500 was a one-time that we agreed to do for digital materials that they had asked for. So I would like to see that at the 5,000 and to include our subscriptions. I think we have like $825 or something like that of, of memberships or subscriptions. So I think that should be included with that, that $5,000.
I, I just want to make sure I understand exactly what you're saying. So what was, what was budgeted last year was 7,500. So what you're suggesting with that, would we be giving them slightly more than that this year?
No.
Included.
What was budgeted was 5,000 last year, but they asked for a special amount for one time digital. They, there was something that they were trying to do for digital materials, I think, to get them caught up with their website. So we agreed for an additional 25, but my understanding was that one, you know, was a one-time thing. So I would be in favor of that being a flat 5,000. And including our subscriptions, I guess we have $800 or so in, in memberships for the town.
Yeah, Jackie, your actual election is right because we, we debated that pretty heavily, right? And we debated the virtual, the virtual visitor center versus the physical one. We had already had 25,000 in the budget for the redesign of our marketing material through EDC, right? And I think Main Street was supporting that with a bunch of pro bono. So I think the, the paper material I thought was duplicative and that's why we were pushing towards the virtual.
Yep, exactly.
That's a good memory.
It is good. Good one, Jackie.
If you would give us maybe just a few minutes to go back and double check the minutes. I know that there was conversation around that idea, but I do think you, my recollection is that you had abandoned that, that concept. I think that that concept came from one of our board members. And then you just went with the $7,500 increase without any connection to marketing materials. So if, if you could just maybe give us while we keep chatting and moving forward, like give staff, I can have staff do a quick research for us. We'll double check on that. And then we, but you are also correct, Jackie, that we do pay $825 as a member of the chamber. And you're correct, that $825 in membership dues isn't reflected in their outside agency funding request. So that, that is a very good memory and that is accurate. And we will check on the other item for you.
Yeah, please, please do. Cause it, again, we're getting hit again for increased visibility of visitor center and tourism materials, which again, we're paying for somewhere else already. So. And I'm not picking on for me, or the chamber, right?
No, I'm not either. I just wanted to be accurate, but thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So just to summarize what we've talked about, just putting the chamber aside for a moment. You know, what, you know, what I proposed was, was the, the $2,000 increase for Meals on Wheels, $749 increase for the EMS Council, um, and then keeping everything else flat. And.
Yeah. And whatever flat is for the chamber.
Whatever flat is for the chamber, correct.
Yeah. I mean, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, while we were chatting, Amy did look up the Darling Trust and it's possible that that could support that additional $2,000. So we will reach out to the trustees, um, either tonight after the meeting or first thing tomorrow morning to see if they might be amenable to that increase for you.
Okay.
And I would just ask that we maybe don't vote then until Wednesday, if that's, if that's something we need to confirm first.
Yeah. I don't think we're going to be making any
Okay.
any final decisions tonight.
Okay.
Is there anything else that anyone wanted to raise on outside agency funding?
So remind me, Maria, what's in the budget? Is last year's in the budget or is this year's in the budget?
Correct. So what is in the budget is level funding, with the exception of the North Central EMS Council.
But not if they ask for a decrease, right? Like when you say level funding, the decreases are pulled.
I believe we left Hartford Interval House at 2,500. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yeah, it looks like it.
So we should go to what they're asking for, right?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, we level funded that. You know, that wasn't, that was a late add. We, this board decided to add, you know, to increase that contribution. So there's a chance that they submitted their application that they had previously. I don't, I don't want to speak for them, but that, it's possible that that happened because we added so late in the game for them.
Yeah, we, we had a discussion about that. And I think part of it, and I'm looking at their submission, was we were the lowest member community in terms of funding those folks. So I think we bumped it up.
Sean, that was actually you.
Yeah.
You, you really caught that. And, and, you know, I really, I want to give you credit for, for bringing that to our attention last year.
Yeah, I, I'd prefer to do level. Cause I, I don't think the interval houses would ever turn away money. I think they, they always need more.
Yeah. I, I'm making a guess that that's an oversight on their part.
Yeah. Yeah, Avon's, Avon gives 2,500, Glastonbury does 5,000, Windsor does 3,000, Vernon 2,500, West Hartford 3,000.
I'd have to see us level at 2,500.
Yeah.
I think we were, there were some comments, I think I even made it about that. It was a little bit, I use the term embarrassing that we were.
Yep, I agree.
Maria, can you, uh, just for, I'm going to tell, I'm going to say for the towns, for the, for the townsfolk's education, which is really means me. The, the difference between why the Spirit Council, what's the difference between Spirit Council and how they are constituted versus an outside agency?
So our outside agencies are generally 501(c)(3) or semi-public, um, you know, kind of nonprofit-type partnership organization. So these are truly outside agencies that are not part of the town. Versus the Spirit Council, they are a body of, of our town government, since they are advisory to you all.
And where would the, um, the 350, yes, too many, where would they fall? What classification?
Sure. They would again, be part of us. They are an entity of the town.
Okay.
Typically, our boards and committees who have a small or modest budget of some sort. We do have the boards and commission budget, which is
Thank you.
Tab six of our budget book are our boards and commissions.
Yes, got it here.
Okay. Are there other questions on this page before we move on?
Uh, just real quick, I'm just seeing a note from staff. The minutes weren't particularly clear on the chamber issue. So we'll go back and look at the, um, at the videotape and report back for you all.
Thank you very much.
Enjoying that memory. That's, that's going to be a painful expedition. All right.
It was one of the last times we were together.
It was.
Yeah.
We, we go back and roll the tape more than, more than you probably realized. So.
Yeah.
You know.
Justify your, your increases right there. I don't know what does. I'm sorry.
Before we move on there, I just wanted to say, you know, there's a couple of new organizations that are on this list. The fact that we're not funding these organizations, I always speak for myself. It just speaks to the, the challenges of the budget year and it is, it is not a reflection in any way on the work that these organizations do. Promise to Jordan and Gifts of Love are incredible partners to the town of Simsbury that I, I know we do, and I hope we can continue to support in other ways.
Well said. Thanks, Eric. I think that I was silent, which is rare, but, um, what I want to key in is Mike's comment was, regardless of why you justified the decision, but this is, you know, we need to start making public comment about the tough decisions that we're going to be making. And you, you can't make a tough, you can't make a decision until you make the decision, the first one. And this is exactly the example of it. And whether the next tough decision is a playground that doesn't get funded or the message we need to start sending for personnel and for, and unions for negotiations around increases or the fact that we're going to be raising people's taxes. We have to start talking more often about what these tough decisions are because it's, we're having to start someplace. And it's an imperfect world and it's a really, yeah, I'm going to hold my tongue a certain kind. It's a really crappy place to be. But that's why we're being chosen to take the responsibility to, to sit here and do these. And it's no, it was, it is no reflection at all, as you said, of the organization. But the towns taxpayers are asking us to make these decisions and we have to start somewhere. So this is, this is me putting these kinds of words into the, the conversation.
Agreed. Mike?
I, I, I think, Chris, you, you said it very well. It's just the beginning of our tough decisions, starting tonight and going forward. But you're right.
All set?
Why don't we, uh, why don't we, there you go. Okay.
Great. Um, so the first items that I had flagged, if you had an interest in potentially adding back on some service restorations and their service improvements, were these particular three items, the parks facilities, maintenance technician position. Again, this was something we had prioritized last year, but were unable to fund. And our Parks and Open Space Master Plan had identified the need for about two to three additional parks maintenance folks. The second item was the Parks Department Professional Development. This, this was to reinstate professional development dollars. So our park staff could obtain the various certifications that were listed. And then the third item was to restore funding for children's print and digital material at the library in the amount of $8,000. And you may also recall that this particular account took a hit, especially this year because the friends weren't able to give nearly as much as they typically would. So again, these were the three service restorations that we flagged for consideration. If in fact, again, the board had any interest in adding some services back.
As I think through this, um, one way we may approach it is to assume that we're going to put these things in. And then when we get to the, you know, the Amy's calculator, where we can see the impact on the mill rate. We can also, I, I, I think we, it'd be great to look at the different pension assumptions and what that would do to the mill rate. And then we can slowly back some of these things out and change those assumptions. You know, again, speaking for myself, I look at these three position, these three opportunities here. And I think that it, that these are incredibly reasonable asks that are really just maintaining what we have as a community.
Yeah. And we can definitely, if folks would like to do that, we can definitely utilize our mill rate worksheet to show you the various scenarios. We had done some analysis heading into the release of my budget. And if you were to ultimately, um, move forward with these three items, as well as the two flagged items. One was the de-escalation training for police and the other was the Spirit Council's data request. Those five items in totality were the equivalent of 0.05 mills or about a dollar a month for a typical home in town, just to give you some perspective. But we can definitely, you know, work that through the mill, mill rate worksheet for you all after this, if, if you would like to do that.
Well, I'm more than happy to have conversation on this slide now, but I just know for me personally, I, we haven't even talked about the pension assumptions yet. And that's going to, that's going to change things. But what, what do others think?
I'm, I'm fine to add them in at this point. But one of the thoughts that I had is if we fund the parks, uh, facility maintenance technician position, but we don't fill it for six months, that savings gives us enough to do a bunch of this other stuff and have a much slower impact. Plus it'll also give us the ability to use that, uh, maintenance, uh, software to really see how that can help with some of our stuff. But I'm, I'm, I'm fine to put it in initially and then we'll kind of see how it works out.
It's a good idea, Mike.
I, I was going to say, I, I'm obviously, I, I think the library materials is a no-brainer here. And the Parks Department Professional Development, if it's for certification and safety, you know, I would be for those. The Parks Maintenance Technician Position, I understand the need. But I also know that we're already way over the 1.5, well, not way over, but over, right? The 1.5 we agreed to do, but we're just going to keep bumping that up higher. So as you said, you know, I'm willing to look at it later to see what happens. But not positive that it's going to.
I would add to both. I would add to both what Mike and Wendy said. I think, again, we're, we're not at the part of talking about parks software, but I think that is part of this conversation. The new software, I think fifteen thousand dollars. And if we are agreeing to add that, that might be something that we want to look at efficiencies and see where things are before adding the technician.
Maria, question for you. So sort of looking at the adds to staff, you know, historic run, I guess, you know, ten-year run here, whichever it is. If you put, if you put the police to the side and you put this tech position to the side, and you know, it's almost like if we had a five-year set of capital, CIP, it's an associate projection, where else are we going to, where else is the board going to get asked for adds to staff? Who's talking like that? Prospectively, from your departments?
Sure, you know, again, you know, parks, I think we are down about two to three staff members there. So a similar, you know, type of ask in the future for parks. Something I know we haven't had a lot of conversation around, but I do think we're rather light in the IT area. I don't know how Rick and Brett have done as much as they've done, just the two of them for as long as they've done. But again, I think as we become more and more aware of, you know, security risks and you know, technology continues to become more and more critical, we're integrating more technology into the work we do here. For me, those two areas in particular, you know, I think are some, some areas that we could definitely increase our staffing at a future point. I will say, I think all of our departments are lean. I know Public Works has needs, Police has needs, a lot of our departments have needs. But that's probably where I would, you know, put my, my first priority at the moment would be parks, followed by IT.
I mean, so, I mean, I just think we, I think we need to, I mean, as, you know, as a group, we sort of need to know that for forecasting. If we have, the expectation here, it sounds like to me is that, you know, if you give me three parks, you're down three for Parks and Rec, you're down three for Police. You're saying, you're, you're, you're saying there's a conversation around IT. So, I mean, are we going to find ourselves in a situation where every single year we're getting an ad, we're getting one compliment ad, essentially, you know, and then, so that compliment ad plus the benefits obligation, and plus, you know, then their step increases, I think this is where we, we're getting, going to get ourselves into trouble if we as these, because these are guaranteed increases then each, every single year. So it kind of goes back to the conversation around, what does that IT software potentially do? Excuse me, what does that scheduling software potentially do? To help us understand better the need for this position. Although, you know, I'm very much in support of the, the organization and what they need. And I was, you know, I know that everything that Orlando said was absolutely of, of value and truth on Saturday. I know these, these people are killing themselves. But we, I just feel like we're going to continue to get every year an add to staff. And that removes the ability for us from a service perspective. And I wonder how many, you know, when you poll the town, I'm almost done, Sean. When you poll the townsfolk, you talk about the services, who feels as if they're not getting what they need from a level of services from their current experience? So.
Everything you're saying is right, Chris. And actually, what I've been kicking around is mostly from the police side, but perhaps we expand that of, I just sketched, I think, you know, we'll call it three for parks, one for IT. Correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, I think that the Police Commission is looking for four total for the Police Department?
Yes, including the civilian position, that's correct, right? And then Public Works had some needs as well.
Sorry. And then we'll call it, what, a half to a full for the assessor? I know we've got that in as a
Temp position.
Temp position now, but you know, the reality is that's probably going to be a full-time position in the future, which I think makes sense, given the revenue recovery, right? So I mean, you know, all in, we're looking at, we'll call it nine positions. It's, you know, do we go to the, do we have a conversation here tonight, Wednesday with, all right, here's the five-year plan for staffing, guys. We, these are our knowns. How do we want to address it? Do we want to say, no, we're going to live lean and mean? And we're basically not going to do anything. Do we do some of them? Or do we put down a plan to do all of them as a known, known plan and be transparent with the Board of Finance and the taxpayers that over the next five years or three to five years, we want to fund these positions and we recognize that there's an increase to the operating budget to do so. But can we have those conversations and at least agree with, with the the track? And again, not a, not an approval preemptively, but an understanding that these aren't surprises. These are the essentially the known, known positions we would like to fund as, you know, as the legislative side of the town. To me, again, it's not a, it's not a blank check, but it's a, you know, and again, we can have a conversation, you know, the grand list growth is three, we don't, we're not looking to raise taxes. But generally, when you do experience growth and you have needs, that's when you address them. When you have one percent grand list growth, it is, is not the time to add anything because you can't even afford the contractual increases, right?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Sean. I'm so sorry that I need to interrupt. I apologize. You know, what's really interesting about that, you know, we just, after the conversation on Saturday, and again, this is now going into my fourth budget cycle. I just finished my third year and wanted to kind of take a look back at some more recent history to see at what pace positions had been approved. And it was, it was really actually interesting. We went back and looked at the three years that I'd been here, the three years prior. And in the three years prior, there were eight positions approved in a three-year period. Whereas we've had one position approved a year since I've been here. So it was a much, much more quick pace and much positions have been approved at a time when we also had less new growth. And then one of those years, we actually had negative new growth. So again, I wasn't here, so I don't know all the circumstances that led to those decisions. But that was just, again, sort of taking a quick snapshot, six-year look back period in terms of fiscal years. And again, looking at positions that had been added. So I just thought it was, it was interesting historical, you know, data to have for the most recent six years. And I did pass along a draft of that to you all this evening through email.
Well, Sean, just to add to what you said, I like the idea of looking at a five-year plan, not that we can commit a future board to anything, but I like not thinking about these things in a vacuum each year and looking at our needs in totality.
Hey, hey, don't give him credit. He just said it. He said it in a more condensed fashion, okay?
I got a list right here. You don't have a list, all right? Come on.
I've got more printed paper than Susan.
Oh, Chris, you're absolutely right, though. Again, credit is yours. It's, it's, it's a really good idea, right? Because it's, you know, this is the stuff that we should help town staff with and focus on, right, is what's the, what's the five-year vision is, you know, we ask our, ask our team here to, to run this community, this hundred million dollar community, right? At razor-thin margins, staffing standpoint, and, and I think to be able to have more open conversations about what they can expect in the future. Again, nothing's a guarantee, I think, would help them also plan for, for the services that they're providing, right? So. You know, and I appreciate this, this list that you put together, Maria, because I mean, it's basically the exact same thing we're talking about here. If we, if we rewind back to fourteen, fifteen, and we, we talked about this, we've added, as you said, we added what, that's eight, that's twelve, right?
Eight positions and the three years prior to me coming.
Yep. So about twelve total, if you go all the way back to fifteen, sixteen, right?
I believe eleven total, three since I've been here, eight prior to my arrival. So I think it was a total of eleven. I have to double check. I think it was eleven over six?
You're right. Thank you. I can't do math.
No worries.
Oh, we're doomed.
It's been a long day. If I can't do math. Yeah, so again, you know, on a five, six-year schedule, you know, so again, these, these eight to nine follow that trend. And again, nobody's looking to expand the size of government. We are looking to make sure that we, we continue to provide the services that are expected. So I guess just as, I know, Eric, you were trying to get to the moving forward part. Maybe we just, again, frame that as part of the end when we look at it. Again, just to leave the, the maintainer in there or not, but when we look at the mill rate worksheet at the end, put a police officer in, put a, a, a park tech in and see what it looks like with the context of, again, we have growth, I'm not looking to raise taxes. But again, at the same time, if it's a nominal increase this year and we get to a point where we have to do it in next year or in two years, you know, is that a more substantial increase down the road, combined with other things? I don't know. So.
Well, and to both Sean and Chris's point, the reason we're hiring that part-time, that temporary person in the assessor's office is because we're going to get caught up on things and we'll actually have more money. And it makes more sense to do thoughtful planning of where we anticipate and whether it's, you know, a policeman every year for the next three years or something to that effect. My recollection was back in fourteen or fifteen, when we did that, we actually, by hiring the police officer, reduced the overtime, which we ended up using that to pay for the position without a dramatic increase in the operating budget.
One quick question on the, the position or potential other positions. Do we normally hire, like, more of an entry level? So we start someone at a lower end rather, like, is this salary here for kind of a, you know, not a ten-year veteran or something, right?
One of the challenges, right, is this is the starting, right, Maria? And this is all in. But then, when we do get a qualified employee, we do go ask the union if we can bring them in at a higher step, right? If, if we're trying to match your salary from the prior community.
Exactly. If the qualifications, you know, warrant higher than step one, again, if it's somebody who's particularly very experienced, has, you know, an incredible amount of qualifications, et cetera, sometimes folks are brought in at higher than step one. If somebody is a bit more junior in their career, then step one is typically appropriate.
And the only reason I even know all that, right, is because that's been grieved and it's been a challenge for us, right? Because the union has the right to say no when essentially not let us bring a qualified employee in at a market rate, right?
Well, that's CSCA's position. I don't necessarily agree with that, but this actually, this particular position would be in the ASME union. And they've continued to have, you know, good and reasonable dialogue with us on candidates based on their qualifications and experience. So fortunately, this position is, again, in a bargaining group that, you know, we've continued to have good conversations with around those sorts of issues. But you are correct, Sean, our CSCA group has taken a very different position in the last eighteen or so months on that topic.
I mean, again, they're right to do so, but it is, you know, we're an employer, right? And we have to, we have to bring talent in and there's a market rate for talent, so.
Want us to move on to the next slide?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Super. So again, just recapping, the two additional items were the police de-escalation training, the Spirit Council data request. And then again, we also spoke about the temporary staffing position for the assessor's office. About twenty-eight hours a week, we are estimating, and again, that would be offset by revenue. Do you want us to go ahead and move to the next slide? And we'll do that as part of the recap at the end with the mill rate worksheet?
Sure. Unless, unless there's any questions anyone had on that slide. Okay.
All right. So next is our conversation on pension and OPEB interest rate assumptions. And we have some really, I think, interesting news to share regarding the amortization period, which you may recall as briefly mentioning last year. So first, just, I'll start off with a quick overview and we will come back to this slide for you. With the help of our actuaries, Amy put together what I think is this very informative chart. And it shows some various options in terms of how we can update various assumptions related to our pension system and how we could do that if we wanted to in a more gradual way. So the column on the far left is what currently stands with our current assumptions at six point seven five percent for an interest rate. And on the left, you'll also see, you've got our general government ARC increase, the police pension plan, the Board of Ed, the town OPEB, and the Board of Ed OPEB. So this is a really good, comprehensive, you know, listing of all of our pension and OPEB liabilities as a larger organization. What we've also then done, working our way over, is a change in asset performance. What would happen if we updated the mortality table all in, in one chunk? We could actually break that into two chunks. But if we were to do it all in one chunk, reducing the interest rate at six point six point two, excuse me, six point six two five. And then on the far right, if we were to reduce the interest rate at six point five percent. What we've done in terms of moving from left to right, based on the advice of our actuaries, would be the order in which they would recommend that we try and tackle these changes. And what we've also provided here is essentially the mill rate impact associated with each of these changes, as well as a dollar impact. And I really would like to go to the more talented, excuse me, the amortization period and then come back to this because I have some very good and interesting news that I think may change perhaps some thoughts and opinions on what we may want to do with this. Can we go to the next slide, Melissa? Great, thank you. So just some quick background information for you. Based on our most recent actuarial analysis, we are at seventy-three percent fully funded for the town pension plan. What we're seeing from some of our benchmark towns, an average to median range of about sixty-five to seventy percent. So we're a bit better than some of our counterparts. Our police plan is actually ahead of that at eighty-one point eight percent. The Board of Ed plan also ahead of that at seventy-four percent. And overall, for OPEB, we're at seventy-five percent. So we're definitely, you know, in a, but I would say a very fair position. I think we go to the next slide. So again, as we mentioned, we could do gradual implementation of the changes that are recommended. You know, our pension plan certainly isn't in a crisis position. I think it's important that we look to the future and certainly we want to be financially responsible. But we could, you know, smooth the impact of these changes by, you know, doing this over multi, a multi-year period. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, we could, for example, take the mortality table into two chunks as opposed to one. We could do the interest rate over two years. We could do asset rate in a year. We could tackle pension first and then move on to the OPEB funds. So really, there's, I think, a number of scenarios. If you want it to be aggressive and do everything all at once, which is a very significant budgetary impact, sure, we could do it all in a year. I think, you know, what you're going to see is there's different options that we could do two, three, four, five, or even over a six-year period. Can we go to the next slide? So this is, again, what we mentioned last year. And, and I really think ultimately this will be a Board of Finance decision. But I really think that this needs to be part of the conversation. So we currently have an amortization period of thirteen years. That, from what our actuaries have told us, is aggressive for a plan structured like ours, a plan of our size, et cetera. And what they typically see is a range of more of fifteen to twenty years for a plan that's similar in nature to ours, although they do see some folks who push that out to as much as twenty-five years. And so, you know, our actuaries have said that they think that they would recommend to us that we could put our amortization period up to twenty years. It would reduce our annual required contribution, but it would take us a bit longer to become fully funded. So it really would be a future, you know, future discussion for, for the Retirement Plans Subcommittee and Board of Finance. But we just got some information this afternoon that we had requested from our actuaries. It's hot off the presses. So my chart I'm about to show you is still a draft. But I think you're going to find this very interesting. So I'm just going to share that screen, Melissa.
I just say, well, wait here. Maria is in her element.
Oh, Eric, you know, it's true. I was very excited when I got this data.
She's enjoying this way too much, Eric.
I am. It's the old budget analyst in me coming out. I get really nerdy about this stuff.
I want like a good old amortization table to make the night exciting.
Oh, goodness. Okay. So again, we just got this information this afternoon and we're going to, you know, dig into it a little bit deeper. But what we wanted to do is to kind of give you an example, if we stretch out the amortization period, again, how that reduces our annual contribution, but how we could leverage that and take advantage of that to implement some of these other changes in our assumptions for our pension plan and have less of a budgetary impact. So, I don't know, can folks see my, see my cursor if I'm doing this? Okay, great. So this right here, this is our current situation. So again, we have a thirteen-year period. Our plan is at six point seven five percent. We have not updated the mortality tables yet. And we haven't updated to reflect our actual asset performance.
Maria, it's Chris. Hey, can I, you know, you keep on saying we haven't updated our mortality. So what are we using, nineteen seventy-two?
Oh, no, I'm so sorry.
What are we talking about?
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, no problem. So last year, brand-new public sector mortality tables were released for the first time. And what they're finding is that, for whatever reason, public sector employees are living longer lifespans. And so essentially actuaries have now developed mortality tables specific to public sector employees. And because they're having longer lifespans, it's therefore affecting our annual required contribution.
I get, I get all that. So, so the mortality table that we're using is, is Society of Actuary two thousand twenty? Or it is at?
It is an older table. No, it's not from the nineteen seventies. I'd have to double check. I think it's from around two thousand is the current table that had been.
Okay, so it's still has smoking, it probably still has smoking and cardiac issues. And that's why, okay, thank you, just.
You got it. So if you look here, these are our pension plans. So our subtotal for pension works, right, our subtotal for pension works across this, this row here. And then these are OPEB plans. And again, we have a subtotal here for OPEB. And so here, down here at the bottom, is our current contributions on behalf of our pension systems and our OPEB. And I'm going to go just to show you for the far, far right column here. So option C, as a for example, would be if we did a twenty-year period for amortization period. We left the interest rate where it is at the moment. We fully implement the mortality table changes all at once. And we update our asset performance. This right here, three thousand dollars, is the net overall cost to the budget. So changing the amortization period really does have an impact. Again, it would take us longer to get fully funded, but it does help lower the annual required contributions. And again, if we want to make some of these other changes without having a significant budgetary impact, again, I just think it's something, you know, for consideration. If we went, let's say, a seventeen-year period, again, including the mortality table, including asset performance, but again, doing over seventeen-year period, you can see here, it would be a little over three hundred thousand dollar budgetary impact. And then option A, if we were to do fifteen years, the difference is just under six hundred thousand dollars. So, yeah.
Can you help me understand the, the risks of having a longer amortization period? So if we, like, twenty years looks great, but what, what risks does that come with?
Yeah, I would probably defer that to Jen for our actuaries because that's definitely not an area of expertise for me. I'm not sure, Amy or Melissa, if you have a good answer for that or if you would defer to Jen when she's out here later this week.
I think I would definitely defer to Jen. I know it's just, I mean, obviously it just takes longer to pay off your liability. And honestly, in, in asking Jen her opinion, I would actually check with our bond advisors as well. I don't know if that would be a red flag for the bond rating agencies. I don't think so because it's not like we're going from thirteen years to thirty years, but I would ask him that before we, we decided to move forward.
Yeah, that's a great point, Amy. Thank you.
I mean, it depends on what it does to the funding percentage, right? If the funding percentage is in the seventies or eighties, nobody cares. If it drops to the forties and fifties, then, then everybody starts paying attention, right? That's a distressed plan. But you gotta look at what it does to the funding of the plan, right?
Right, right.
You know, and honestly, and that's the part that, that folks are forgetting, right, is if we drop the interest rate, doesn't that also impact the funding of the plan, Amy? I mean, I gotta know none of us are actuaries here, but that's gonna drive the funding percentage down as well.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
So again, you know, th- this stuff doesn't come without risk, you know, yes, it's always wise to assume a lower investment rate. But again, you know, the bond, the, the, the rating agencies have been saying six percent since I was three feet tall, right? And we've still gotten triple A for the last twelve years, right? So it is a factor and it's not one that we should ignore, but it is one of dozens, if not more, factors. Right? And again, we're also one of the highest, I think, the highest town from an OPEB funding standpoint in the state of Connecticut.
We're up there. We're definitely up there. We're very well-funded from an OPEB perspective.
We were the first town to actually start funding our OPEB obligation. I know that. So. Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a mix, you know, and again, six, seven, five is not irresponsible, right? You know, eight and a half is, or eight, or whatever, you know. And so i- it's all philosophical, you know, we, we meet our obligations, the plan is not distressed. No, I, I mean, we've got sixteen people looking at it at the retirement subcommittee meetings, some of which are in the business, right? In addition to, in addition to the advisors, in addition to you guys, so.
Right, right. Yeah, and so what I'll do is I'll, I'll pop Melissa pull our slides back up and go back to the table that did show if we weren't to consider the amortization period at all, you know, just what we would be looking at if we were to either do asset performance, mortality table, part of that, the interest rate assumptions. And again, you know, maybe, maybe you all land that, you know, you're, you'd like to see a certain progress made and what your recommendation finance might be. Maybe it's, you know, you'd like them to consider the amortization period as part of the overall strategy. So really hoping that that information along with this information will help form some conversation for you all in terms of what your comfort level is, what you'd like to see happen and maybe see the Board of Finance consider.
So Maria, again, I'm just remembering our conversations from last year. And my understanding is we did not move either, correct?
Correct, right, that was correct.
But I believe we did say or use the promise that we would this year because we were not last year. So I, I'd like to hear people's conversation around that and what we would be willing to do and, you know, what impacts that would be.
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Jackie, because we did play with that. We went to six point six two five for a while. And then somehow we went back to six point seven, I think, in the overall, to get the overall budget passed. So, so a drop in, in the interest rate with or without the mortality table, again, it's, it'd be better to see them on their own. Like, is this six point six two five interest rate here? Does that include the updated mortality table or is it just the interest rate?
No, it includes the updated mortality tables. In talking to Melman, they recommend doing the mortality tables first, even if.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I've got to fixate on death tonight, is that, you know, like last year, we did the shell game of the six twenty-five, this and that, we'll do whatever next year. But the, you know, so the, what, what I, I, I have a cha- a challenge, or I don't, I don't really appreciate the way we're managing this is that we have two things that we know are not true, but we're choosing, in my opinion, we, we have two things that we know aren't true, but we're choosing to ignore them. So the answer is one that we can be comfortable with. And that is the interest rate assumption is incorrect and the mortality table is absolutely incorrect. So not moving it to reflect accurate, accurate position is just, again, ignoring what we know is true because we don't have to face the, a, a difficult decision or, which is potentially to raise tax to satisfy. Now, the diff, I will offset that by saying if the conversation is around getting to different levels of funding completion and having the lower, and having more comfort with lower top, you know, a lower level of funding, that's a different conversation. But avoiding what we know is inaccurate, I think, is irresponsible and we should be addressing that immediately. That's a fair point. I mean, if we made these changes, again, none of us are actuaries, but our funding is what, seventy-three, seventy-ish, right?
Uh, seventy-three to seventy-four.
I think it, it drops into the low sixties if we make these changes, right?
I have to go back and look, Amy, do you recall?
I don't know.
I mean, these are pretty substantial hits to the funding ratio, I believe. And again, I, I don't think the fund, the plan is not, and this is the problem, the funding percentage is nothing but an actuarial calculation. And that's all it is. The fund has enough money to cover our obligations for today and for the foreseeable future. So the fund is not distressed. But from a, a long-term standpoint, you want to always be moving up, right, Chris? You never want to be moving backwards. But yeah, I mean, I mean, six, you know, sixty is not great. I mean, you get noticed by the, by the feds in, in the sixties. You know, I don't think we'll, I don't think we'll get written up to go into, you know, having to have a structured plan, but we'll get noticed, you know. So I think that's, that's not the good kind of notice.
Well, I, I agree with your point, Sean, and what we really want to do is find out from the pension people and our bond underwriters, if we do this, is it gonna have a negative impact on us? Because those dollars become chump change real quick if our bond prices go up.
But the reality is, Mike, if we change this, nothing actually changed.
I, I realize that.
All we did is move the deck chairs on the Titanic, right? You know, that, that's, that's the beauty of being, an actuary is like a weatherman, right? You're never wrong. But you're never right either. So it's, you know, it's a challenging business to be in, so.
Point well made.
Sean, are you saying we shouldn't make any changes?
No, I'm, I'm saying it's, it, philosophically, Chris is right. We should make the changes. But, you know, again, if, if you start getting into a substantially lower funded position, you know, we all like to make fun of this state of Connecticut for being funded, you know, in, in a pretty poor position. So, you know, that number does have a visual impact. But as, and again, as Maria just reminded me, I mean, we're not subject to arrest, so that is good. But I believe there is a separate watch talk for me to split plans, so.
Yeah, and our actuary is going to be here tomorrow evening with the Board of Finance. They had requested an update on some of this information. So that might be also a really good conversation, just for folks to tune into if, if you have some time tomorrow evening.
Yeah, I mean, but the reality is, and thank you, but the reality is, sorry, I'm just, I'm doing the math real quick. When you, what your question was a couple of minutes ago, if we quote unquote do the right thing, hold on a second, eight fifty-two, nine forty-eight, I mean, it's a two-point two million dollar increase to our budget between the, the asset performance and mortality table and the six-five. The two percent tax increase, all things being equal. Right?
If we were to do it all at once, right, if we were to do it all at once, it definitely would be a pretty significant tax impact. Which is why, you know, we would recommend to try to smooth that maybe over a period of, of years, you know, maybe two to, two to four, two to six.
So is the right way to think about this to tackle like some number of these columns? Or would it be saying, look, the right-hand column is where we want to get to? How many years do we want to wait till we get there? And that's how we smooth it? Do we want to do it in three years or five years? I guess I could just use some guidance on how to think about this.
Yeah, I got, my, my preference would be a gradual implementation. You know, probably, again, my comfort level is probably somewhere more in the three to five, you know, timeframe. But I also know that the Board of Finance at times has expressed, you know, an interest in doing it more expeditiously. So in terms of, you know, that regard and policy guidance from both boards, you know, I'd probably defer to you all about on your comfort level, but I think my comfort level will be somewhere more in the three to five timeframe.
And Maria, just to confirm, so that we're not trusting my math, it's, it's real math, is the change in asset performance by itself is sixty-one thousand? The mortality table increase is eight hundred and fifty thousand by itself?
Uh, let's see, the sixty-six dollars, the eight thirty, that is mortality table plus the change in asset performance.
So it's, it's, so it's multiplying across, they're not individual?
Right. So it's kind of building upon as we move across, meaning in terms of, on the advice of our actuaries, in terms of what we should probably focus on or start with first, it was change in asset performance, mortality table, followed by the interest rate reductions.
Okay, so I don't multiply the, I don't add the ninety-six to the eight thirty, then the ninety-six is in the eight thirty?
I believe it's in the eight thirty, correct, Amy?
Yes, you got it. Everything that's on the left that goes to the right, everything to the right incorporates everything to the left.
Okay, so this is less scary than you had thought, Sean.
It is. That's good. That's better news. So it's only one point three.
Exactly. Only one point three.
Hey, that's better than two point two.
Millions and millions.
That's why we ask questions to make sure, because, okay. Yeah, because I was reading this as each column stood on its own and then you had to add them together. It's my, my mistake.
Oh, I'm sorry if I didn't catch that. Yeah.
So we could do just the, change the asset performance and update the mortality table this year and then go to change the interest rate next year. I mean, that would be maybe aggressive, but over two years and again, we would still be at least fulfilling part of what our promise was to make a move on this.
Well, yeah, we could do that. And the other thing is the same speech I said before on staffing is, in the good grimless years is when you do this stuff.
That would be now.
Yeah, and again, another thing that we could do, again, depending on comfort level and where the mill rate lands, is, you know, we could take the mortality table in two chunks. So that's something that we could consider as well.
So since this at the end of the day is something that's in the Board of Finance's realm, but I think we, we need to make some, I think we could certainly provide a perspective, but we think we'll also need to make some assumptions so that we can take a budget and pass it to them. You know, that has some of this built into it. So I'm wondering if we, if we see, you know, wh- what would it look like if we tackled this in, say, three years? And then also add on top of that the budgetary assumptions we've already talked about tonight and seeing how that would impact the mill rate. And, and then have a conversation. I think it would just be helpful for me to see, you know, cumulatively what we're talking about there.
Okay. So when you say three years, Eric, we would do asset performance and full implementation of the mortality table in year one, followed by interest rate reduction to six six two five and then year three, interest rate reduction to six five, sort of take it, take it in that approach over a three-year period? Is that what?
This isn't like my proposal, it's just one way of looking at it. Going along with the spirit of the conversation, but I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
Okay.
I mean, the problem is the biggest chunk is the mortality table, right? You can't, it's hard to get up.
Right.
I mean, we can go to six-five this year, which is only, what, four hundred thousand? Plus the asset performance, so that's five hundred thousand?
Oh, if, if, if we're gonna do that, then we need to realize that we're blowing up the one point five percent increase directive that we got from the Board of Finance. I'm fine doing that, and I think doing this in steps does make a ton of sense.
Mike, we blew up that directive the day we took a breath in November. I mean, that number was never possible.
I've been holding my breath since then.
And that, that number was so far from realistic, even in.
I know.
But in fairness, if we're making these changes, I think Board of Finance would look favorably that this is one of the reasons we are exceeding that guidance. Does that make sense?
I think so, too.
I agree.
So we haven't decided anything other than we want to look at this where we see the impact of the mill rate with the other things together.
Yeah, I know that would be very helpful to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Before we do that, are there any other sort of policy questions we should consider?
Um, maybe also too, just in terms of if you would like to advance, you know, to them a, a recommendation or an ask to evaluate the amortization period. Again, not necessarily having you say what specifically, but if you feel strongly, you know, if you think that they should at least take a look at that and evaluate that, maybe just share that.
I can only speak for myself. This is, this is not like personally an area of expertise and I would, I would listen to experts in this area. But if increasing the amateur is, I mean, I can't say the word. If increasing that period from where we are to closer to twenty would be, you know, would be a responsible decision, I, I, I would be open to it.
I think we'd have to wait to find out. Go ahead.
Even if we go, we're at thirteen years now, even if we go to fifteen or sixteen.
Yeah.
If, if we go to sixteen and do the change in asset performance, we do that this year. That, that alone is going to probably minimize that mill rate impact. That, that alone is going to probably minimize that, uh, mill rate impact. Um, you may be able to do both of those and maybe something else, but I, I think taking step one, uh, the common theme you've heard is you, you hire people when you have the revenue. You don't wait until you, you literally are on the Titanic. So, uh, I think that does make sense.
Can I ask a stupid question?
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I was just doing some quick math while you guys were talking. Sorry, go ahead. Yeah.
So Chris and, and, and Amy and anyone else, honestly, so thirteen years is an aggressive schedule, right? I mean, in, in its base, that means that we're going to fund our obligation in a thirteen-year period, right? From, and that's how the, that's a portion of how the arc is, is, is.
Assuming the assumptions you're working with. Yep.
Yeah. But again, and you know, our interest, our, our performance has not been terrible. Our performance has been good to, to, to strong in a couple of years, right? We're, we're not exactly beating the market, but you know, we're not tanking. How the hell are we so underfunded? If, if we're funding in an aggressive schedule and we're, we're coming close on an actuarial assumed interest rate. I mean, it's just, this is the part about the actual calculations.
It is, is part of it, Amy, the, you know, you, we have obligations, the capitalist obligations out there across certain, certain employees that continue to spin up. So.
Yeah.
You don't know how, you don't know where to stop. You don't know where, where, where to stop at. I think that's capping, capping pensions is a whole nother conversation.
Right.
Yeah. And then the OPEB side as well.
Yep.
The nail on the head, the change in asset performance can either help or hurt you. And then employee data that we give them every year, depending on the age of those employees and, um, I don't, they look at everything. I'm surprised they give them a health check too. Um, but yeah, that actually changes that as well.
Yeah, that's right. See, it was a stupid question, but it's I guess that exemplifies the point, guys, is we could leave it at thirteen years. We could drop it to six, five. We can update the change in asset performance, update the mortality table. And we will make no progress for five years for things outside our control is really the frustrating thing about frigging pensions. Which is why they've disappeared in the private sector because they're so damn unpredictable and they're so expensive.
Yep. And the only, the, it'll be, you know, I, it'll be an amazing day. The, 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 the financial levers, the, the, the amount of, the amount of of positive leverage that will occur once these spin off to the town, the taxpayers, the things you want to do is just, it's quite, being quite impressive, you know?
That'll be, yeah. You know, a conversation we would never have is if we had a 401K, we would never have to have this conversation. And we would never be sitting here having to figure out how to put a million three in the 401K.
Well, don't, isn't there another plan? Like we don't offer this to new employees and there's the other plan. So at least it's not new people getting a pension, right?
It's, it's a little bit of a mix. Um, it's currently, um, the DB plan for town employees is closed to our ASME bargaining unit, which is actually, um, our largest, our largest bargaining unit. Um, it's also closed to new hires for our dispatchers. Um, and then for our police folks, you may recall, um, while a DB plan is still open, um, it's now an option and it's a, um, reduced benefit and a reduced plan. So if you'll recall from that pension arbitration that we just completed over the summer, um, the estimated savings to us over the next fifteen years was, uh, about a million dollars. An estimated savings to us from that restructuring. Um, we are currently, um, in negotiations with three of our bargaining units. Um, and so I, um, really can't speak to those, um, pension proposals in open session, um, but I'm happy to update folks, um, about negotiations related to that, uh, a personal sub on, on Thursday.
So are those savings amortized in here?
That's a great question because we just, yeah, we just got that pension arbitration award, um, over the summer. So I don't know, Amy, I would think that that's probably not factored in as of yet. Would that be a correct statement?
Yeah, that's accurate. So our next valuation, it would probably be factored in, but no, it's not. I don't even know if Milliman is aware of those changes yet.
But that would help us, that would potentially benefit us on the arc, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Right. And I, so I was just doing some quick math while we were chatting. If you wanted to take, um, the mortality table in two chunks, assuming the Board of Finance agreed and we applied this throughout both the town and Board of Ed, um, it would be about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars if we were to take the mortality table in two chunks. It was my quick math. I hope I got that right, but. So a change in asset performance and taking the mortality table in half is about four sixty-three, five, seven, one. That was my quick math. I'm sorry, that's town and board of it. So for the purposes of your budget and the mill rate worksheet, it would reflect the town portion of that, but that's, sorry, that's in totality in terms of at the end of the day, if we were to do it for both entities, that's what we would really be looking at in terms of an impact.
Certainly more reasonable than some of the other moves for doing it all in one.
And would we be able to look at this with an amortization of longer than thirteen years?
We have uh, fifteen, seventeen and twenty years with the asset change in asset performance and updated mortality tables, but we don't have the information um, for those options with the interest rate reductions at this point.
Okay.
You actually need to know the secret handshake, Eric, and have an advocate to, to do an amortization table.
What I'm trying to figure out, and I, I don't mean to harp on this, is I want to get to Amy's, uh, mill rate worksheet.
Yeah, we, we can definitely go. If folks have a, a good background on this, we can definitely move along.
Can I, I have one more question?
Yeah.
If, so looking at the chart I'm looking at right now, doesn't include the going from third, the amortization push, correct?
That's correct. This would be if we stayed at thirteen years.
Okay. And I know you guys said the mortality table is the most important thing, but let's just say if we didn't do that, but we did do the, we went to six point two five. Am I correct in saying that it would be a medium, median home tax impact would be twenty-six dollars? Uh, and a hundred would be forty dollars? Right? Eighty-four minus sixty-six plus six.
And, oh, and we did the asset performance. Yeah, twenty-four dollars, it looks like. Yep. If we did the six, six, two, five and asset performance, is that right, Amy?
I don't know. That's way above my pay grade. I don't know. The actuaries calculate it differently if it's just the interest rate without the mortality table. So I'm, I'm honestly not sure.
Okay. Well, I'm going to pretend that it is. Yeah. So I just, my point is if we got more bang for our buck with the Board of Finance, didn't do the mortality tables, but went to the six point six two five or the six and a half. It's a lower mill rate impact this year. And again, if, if it was, you know, they looked more favorably on that versus the mortality table. I don't know which is, like you, I know what you guys said. That's another way to look at it, right?
Right. You could, um, I think the, the actuaries would push back and say, if you're going to do a partial, anything, you do a partial mortality.
Okay. I, I.
You're, you're, Wendy, you're, so to speak, I mean, try to distill it down. By not acknowledging what you know to be the truth, you're just, you're just it, you're proverbial kicking the can down the road just to make things look okay for right, to make yourself feel. It's just, so it's not like that's a prior, it's not, my, I, I don't want to make it like that's my priority is a change of mortality. It, it's where you would start to actually make this equation as close to accurate as possible. With good data.
And how do you do half the mortality tables? Get into that.
If you say, you know, if you say somebody, if that two thousand table says the average is eighty-eight and the two thousand ten says it's ninety-two, and then the two thousand twenty says it's ninety-six, you're slapping at the two thousand. If you just paid the eight, the ninety-two versus going to the ninety-six.
Okay. This sounds like it's right up your alley, Chris.
I just, I just did, uh, uh, mortality for dummies over the weekend, a book, just as I could sound smart tonight.
Chris, the only thing I'll challenge you on is this is the baseline, not the truth, right?
Correct. Baseline.
Yeah. And, and not to be a nitpicker, but it's again, as I said before, the actuaries are never right, but they're also never wrong, right?
Yeah. It will. It's, it's art, it's, it, you know, it's hard to argue. I think it's, it, it, we're, they're probably a little more accurate with the, the death data currently than they are about how long-term you could project interest rates to be where they are.
Yes. Yeah, they're not, not too good on the interest rate side, but yeah.
So Eric, to sum this up, I, if we could maybe do the mortality table, half of it, I guess, and the change in asset performance, and we can add that to see where that brings our mill rate.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable place to start.
Nominate Chris Peterson or Splinter Russian.
Super. Great. Thanks. Melissa, would you mind advancing or was that, was that our last, our last policy slide? Too many devices going. Yeah, that was, that was it. We had covered everything. There was sort of a summary at the end. Um,
Wonderful. Oh, that's great. Thank you.
All right. Would you guys like us to have Amy pull up the mill rate worksheet and I can just kind of work back through the list of items that you wanted to see and, and kind of visualize?
Sure.
Never been more excited for something.
All right.
All right. So as you guys were talking, I was just putting things into the worksheet.
Jesus. Oh, sorry.
So, um,
That's an appropriate response, Chris.
So over here, I just, you can double check to make sure I have it accurate. We reduced the twenty-five hundred to the chamber. We added a parks and rec position. We added the twenty-five hundred for the parks and rec professional development. The eight thousand for the library materials. You wanted to see what a police officer would look like. We added the assessor position. We added the spirit council money, the de-escalation training. And then I updated the, um, pension tables to include the updated mortality tables. And then I also increased the grand list to offset the assessor position. So it's neutral. So this brings us to an increase of the mill rate point six-two or a hundred and thirty-three dollars to the median home.
And Amy, that was doing the mortality table all at once as opposed to breaking it into two? Okay. Thank you.
Is that a yes? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, is there a way to show it if we only do half of it?
You take four hundred thousand out of that number, right?
Pretty much about that. About three sixty-seven, I think was half.
Sorry, Amy.
That's okay. So at half, it would be four eight or a hundred and two dollars.
Yeah. Amy, could we just add one more item? Um, it was if we were to move the twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, reduction from the registrars to a CNR project? So that would be an add back.
So point four eight mils or a hundred and four dollars.
And just one other modification. So we're going to definitely confirm this tomorrow, um, but it looks like the board uh, on the chamber had talked about ten thousand, um, doing seventy-five hundred or adding twenty-five hundred on top of the seventy-five hundred for the chamber for some sort of technology related project. So I think the seventy-five hundred may have been the base. Um, so perhaps we just leave, um, the chamber level funded and we'll confirm that for tomorrow. I'm sorry, for Wednesday.
Okay.
And one other question, Amy, I think you're working on looking at this to include like next year when the, the, like the change in debt, well, when we add the capital projects for next year in the years, in year out years, as it keeps going up. If the budget keeps increasing and we keep the debt service, I guess, right now we're not at eight percent or seven percent. It doesn't include Latimer or Meadowwood or anything like that. So that's going to add on top of what this one oh four shows next year, right?
Yeah, in future years it will. Yes. Yep.
That, so that also.
Yeah, I mean, simply put, that one goes to eight million, right? If we do it all? Not this year, as you're saying, when you've been in, in two years. Right, Amy?
Uh, yeah, I think it was roughly about that.
I mean, if you roll up, just if you roll up on the screen to that, so it's six, six. So basically the, the debt service line item is what? Six, six right now?
Yes.
So six, seven, six point seven percent. So if we go to seven percent, it's seven million next year, right? And if we go to eight percent, it's roughly eight million? Yeah. I mean, rounding, rounding.
Rounding up for the hundred, but there's just, I mean, Wendy just said, but just to clarify, there is, there, this budget uh, doesn't include any additional capital projects forecasted here, correct? There's nothing, there's nothing added in here. We're just doing the service assumptions or what these are.
Yep.
Right. We had left capital, um, level funded, um, for the purposes of the proposed budgets, right? It's going to be anything above and beyond. It wouldn't be trying to build back some of that cash capacity that we lost.
Then this number is low. The, the, based on this, the mill rate, the, if you scroll down, the one.
Yeah, that's it. Correct.
Is low.
It's low because we're not, we're not adding in any of the capital that we've talked, the capital projects we, we started talking about on Saturday.
Well, but it's a timing issue. We don't have to pay for them next year.
No, no.
Yeah.
But they start being, they start reflecting in the, 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 I mean, you could add them to the, to the increase to the median home. Once you, you know, you fully realize them into the budget.
Correct. I mean, that's Amy, how we do it. So the, the jump, the, the six point six is paying for the last ten years of debt service decisions.
Right. Exactly. So tomorrow, anything that you go through for the CNR priorities, if you still have projects that are above and beyond the cash we have avail, have available, that would impact your general fund if you want to keep it and not push it off. Um, or if you decided to look at the capital projects and pay for any of those in cash for some reason, um, which I wouldn't, I don't anticipate you doing, but um, if you wanted to. So when we have that discussion on Wednesday, if you do want additional funding for those capital items, it would impact the general fund.
And just to make this more confusing, we have cash available potentially at the end of this year as well, right?
Potentially.
Right.
My savings before they hatch.
But my, my point is, is there's, there's two times to pay for cash. Cash or projects, you can pay cash before six-thirty or after six-thirty. So. Which again, to the conversation the other day, when, you know, again, when we know there's a million dollars, we as a community, we have accelerated cash for capital items utilizing current year savings. It ends up working it out the same over the long run, but it's a, it's a timing question.
And not to complicate matters, I'm sorry, I meant to, to share this at the beginning of this discussion with you. Um, we did receive some notice today, um, that the Senate has, um, passed sort of, um, the next phase and, and the recovery bill. So, um, some estimates that we received again are estimating that we would receive, uh, two point five million for the town and over a million dollars for the Board of Education. Um, if that in fact does get finalized, it's obviously a substantial amount of money. But we have no idea at this point in time and in terms of what we could actually use those funds for. So, um, there is a session tomorrow morning that I'm going to try to sit in and listen on to see if there's, you know, some high level preliminary guidance. Um, you know, what will we be able to use that for capital staffing? We, we, we just don't know yet.
And then when would we know about that funding? Not just what it would be used for, but when would we know we were getting it, I guess, or that it would be approved?
Yeah, I think some estimates that CCM shared today, um, Amy, was it that they were hoping we would know within about a week or so, right? If that legislation was going to become final, um, and then hopefully, you know, within a few weeks thereafter, we would know for certain what types of uses we might be able to, to put that money towards. Um, but just a lot of uncertain.
Yeah, I think they're having a webinar tomorrow to talk some more. So hopefully.
Yeah, just a lot of uncertainty with that right now. I mean, of course, and it's one-time revenue. So with it being one-time revenue, you know, I wouldn't, you know, advise that, you know, we pay for ongoing operating expenses with that, even if we're, you know, authorized to, you know, to pay for salaries with that, then, you know, maybe we take those savings and apply it to capital projects or something that are one-time in nature, because then we'll just have a bigger cliff, right? To make up, um, a couple of years out if we use that for operating.
Maria, just a quick question. That six, that three sixty-seven that you calculated quick for half of the mortality tables, that didn't include the Board of Ed, did it?
That did include. That did include the Board of Ed, Amy. Good catch. I'm sorry, it did include the Board of Ed. Um, I'd have to go back in a second.
So this would be lower. Because if we do it, we're going to do it for all the all the pensions, I assume.
Think there's a 20% carrying fee.
Did you want me just to leave the 367 number for the Board of Ed in here?
Yeah, otherwise we're going to be short and we won't be able to do it for all the plans. I was just, okay, thanks.
Yeah, right. I mean, technically, it's the town budget, so we could, you know, separate that out.
Just for a mill rate impact, we separate it out afterwards before we vote on it, but just for.
Yeah, but that's like, so for our number, Amy, if you could just slide back up. Oh, so that means that our so that 874 has how much in it? It has the 360 or it has the the whole number in it.
Where's 874?
It was 874.
So our 974, the change?
Where are you seeing 970? Oh.
Yeah, I but lines like what cell with like G14? What are you talking about here, Sean?
G10, I sunk your battleship, Chris. G10, that has that has ours in the BOEs or just ours, and it has the full or the half?
Has the half and it has the town and the BOE.
Okay, so then it's another 180 less on ours, right? Because that shouldn't be in ours. It should be, it should be in the schools. Again, it ends up working out on the mill rate side, but
Right.
Our increase, you know, the number we bring matters.
Yeah, Maria's calculating it quick.
Well, Maria calculates that. Um, I we, I guess someone suggested we add it in the police officer. If you add in that police officer, and I think Mike had alluded to that, does that take away the overtime costs? And is that factored in here?
So I just added the police officer. The chief can speak to whether it takes away overtime or not. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, yeah, that's what I always, I don't know who, if he's still one.
Yeah, I didn't see him either.
I think the answer is no, right? Because there.
There he is. Yeah.
Why is the police officer in at one? I'm sorry, this, why is it at 142 versus 65 plus 10?
Oh, he is. I'll show you the breakdown. So the salary is 66 and then 4,000 for a holiday pay that they get. And then the FICA, the Medicare, the retirement, the medical, life and disability, workers' comp, and then 11,000 for equipment.
So, wow, so the delta means for three, $9,000 less on the P and R tech, there's so much less of a long term investment. He's okay. Holy cow. All right.
But again, would it take out the overtime costs if we had that extra person?
So Wendy, in all likelihood, no. And, you know, just to take a real quick look at it, you know, we we average over the last three years, we have averaged about a 4.5 officer vacancy. So we're operating with, you know, roughly three to four to five officers less on a regular basis because of either vacancies, because an officer hasn't been hired because of retirements, or because of accumulation of leave, sick leave, vacation leave, military leave, et cetera. So adding one officer to that will probably not impact the uh, amount of overtime.
And we have open, you you have some open positions currently. Is that true?
That is true. Yep. There's three, there's three open positions right now.
So is it fee? I mean, I don't know what the market is for hiring police officers. Is it something that's gonna, we're going to be able to fill?
Well, we're going to keep trying. The market, as you say, is is not very good for police officers right now. It's very difficult to fill to fill positions.
Yeah.
Can imagine why.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's tough times, right? And the legislation at the state certainly didn't help that.
Yeah, so so it's almost as if we've been operating at three to five officers less for the last three years. Uh, then then we have, you know, sort of scheduled for. So back to your original question, I don't think it's going to impact the overtime.
Maria or Amy, what I my AED is raging here. What what are we going to, we already talked about this, this is the printout I updated today.
Uh, that's Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Check fire.
Although it is a beautiful chart, I'm I I enjoy the work very much on that. All right, Amy's doing magic now.
Yeah, I just sent Amy a number. Just again, some rough math, if it's just the town only updating asset performance, half the mortality table on pension and OPEB, the number I came up with was 278097, and that's not including the Board of Ed.
278, okay. Maria, dumb question, but did the school operating budget, did that reflect changes that they talked about the other night?
Um, their operating budget, they had one additional tweak to health insurance from the last time that we had met. Um, so I believe that their overall increase at this point is around 1.8%.
Okay, that's what I remembered. I just want to make sure this number reflected that. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And their proposed budget also did not have initially any of the changes to pension either.
So this 25, 3% increase does have the pension in?
Yeah. I'm sorry, that does, Amy. Oh, you did add their share to their budget?
Mm hmm.
In the estimate. Okay, thank you.
So round numbers, we back out the pension, we're at a $700.
Wait, hold on, I mean, I was supposed to be subtracted.
Okay, as I say, it looks like a big jump.
Yeah, because we had the half, we had the full in there and then we were taking out half, so that was my fault.
That's okay. Roll back up, if you don't mind. All right. So now, sorry, for argument's sake, can you just back out the pension change entirely? Just to see what it looks like with all that stuff in it.
Or take out all like the.
Mortality table entirely and the asset performance.
All right.
Yeah, I was, I wanted to see what that looks like.
Oh, we've got time to kill Yukon women up 27 to six.
All right.
You just institute the mercy rule.
Oh, I should have brought food to the office.
Sorry, Chris.
I'm eating my stack of yogurt for my breakfasts now. I'm so hungry.
I don't want to keep anybody longer, but I do have a non-budget question if we're going to have time.
That's out of order. You can't do that.
It is. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jackie.
I just wanted to talk about the the TIF, right? The MIRA impact in the letter that we got, the communication?
Yes.
$14? More?
Oh, for the tip fees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we going to talk about that?
We can. There's nothing we can do about it, right? That's part of the problem with these quasi governmental agencies. We're kind of stuck when we sign a contract, right, Maria?
Right, right. And I could, if Tom is still on, have him speak to how that is, how that is set. But they are having a meeting for folks like Tom and myself. It's, it's the next Tuesday, Tom, I think we'll know more about the update and where they're heading with having to decommission the plant. And I mean, right, that's part of the problem is that they're not able to know, to operate the facility how they once did.
With the jet engine turbine?
That that's part of it, the missing jet engines. You know, that's one of those things. It's like, it's going along and then all of a sudden it just falls off the face of the earth and we're in this massive mess.
No, no, I would have to say that we've known this was coming for about 10, 15 years and it's one of those. You know, you don't put the money into the maintenance and you have a useful life of a plant. And it is over a decade beyond its useful life.
Gotcha.
Then when it went to, um, we looked at the redevelopment, it was heavily influenced by deep, and they were looking to not just redevelop the trashed energy plant, but they also wanted to make one of the most cutting edge recycling facilities, and they were also looking at having an anaerobic digester, I believe, for for food scraps. So there was a lot packaged in there, which it came out to be the cost of around, I think it was 630 million or equivalent to two high schools. And again, now we've gone so far down this road, I think at this meeting next week that Maria was referring to. They're going to not only justify why they feel the $14 a ton is reasonable, they're also going to tell us that they're preparing to ship the solid waste from the region out of state. Which I know when we discussed this was was absolutely against what everybody on this board thought was the right thing to do.
I thought we, Tom, I thought that it was already, I thought we're already sending stuff out of way, the state.
No.
Well, what's, nothing is leaving the state of Connecticut right now for trash.
Uh, right now, from from the state of Connecticut, a few towns do send their trash out of state. Connecticut DEEP, um, through their their, um, long range program is is not supportive of that. A couple of years back, when the trashed energy facility did go down, for a short time, trash from Simsbury was shipped out of state. But generally, right now, everything that that is collected curbside in Simsbury goes to the Hartford facility and is turned into energy.
That's correct.
So, Tom, after your meeting, you'll know more, but it basically looks like we're going to have to accept that increase in fee and that's it?
We do have, there is an opt out clause within our long term contract. Um, I could look to see if we've hit the provisions. The problem is, there's very little other options out there.
Right.
I've had a few other towns reach out to me about whether or not we should look to do our own RFP. And also, Simsbury is a member of the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, where we have also discussed having an RFP, but quite frankly, until you decide what the state or if the state's going to reinvest in MIRA, it's premature to go out to bid.
Okay. Yep, I remember that you had told us all of this. It just seems like there's no good option at the moment.
That, I think, has been the frustrating reality. DEP has done a really nice job of coming up with a program to reduce the amount of solid waste generated. But it's long range plans, but it still requires some way to get rid of the trash that we all generate.
Right.
I didn't think that we would talk trash tonight as a highlight to.
Sorry.
Well, so bringing us back to the question at hand, it looks like the pension assumptions add about $35 to the mil rate, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, go back up to the top though, because we're not on the Board of Finance, so go back up. There it is. So we contribute, we have a 4% increase. With all that stuff on the side.
Okay. So would now be an appropriate time to talk about why we added a police officer there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Maria. I know, I know that at this point it's not in in your budget. I know there's other priorities, but I believe the Police Commission has talked about, I believe the number is four. That they'd like to see added to the to the staffing um, from from their professional opinion that that to maintain the level of community policing um, that the town has come to enjoy and expect, that's the number that they believe is appropriate. And, you know, their stat, the stats are make the argument, and I think we're the lowest officer to resident ratio um, in amongst our peer group. Um, so, you know, and and folks will argue, well, we're very safe. Yep, we are very safe. We're safe because of our residents and we're safe because of our police department. But in in talking with my friends on the Police Commission and and with others, I mean, the challenge is, is that it's it's not the tickets, it's not the, it's not the burglary investigations um, that that we're necessarily losing. It's it's all the other things. It's the 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 being able, and Chief, please step in if I'm overstating or being wrong here. It's the having the presence on Iron Horse Boulevard when there's a lot of folks out there with the bike officers riding around. It's it's being in different, different populated portions of the town in the summer. Um, it's being able to 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 be, um, you know, immersed in the community, I think, is what we're we're being challenged by at this point. Is that right?
Yeah, yes, Sean, all of that is right. You know, there's several different reasons why we are looking for more officers. You know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, with just regular amounts of vacancies or and or leave for vacation time, comp time, sick leave, whatever it may be, we are not running on a regular basis at that authorized 38 or 39. Our rate of officers per 1,000 residents, which we look at among our comparable towns that we look at within Connecticut, within New England, within the Northeast, within the nation, is way off. So we've been looking at that now for several years. To get up to where our comparable towns are, we would need a number of 42 officers, and right now we're authorized for 39. Um, you know, Mike Glidden did a great job presenting on Saturday about the growth that we've had, the growth that we're getting, we're having right now, and the growth that we are expecting. We don't want to get caught behind the curve on this. Um, I think it's very important, as Sean was saying, for 15, 20 plus years, we have developed a relationship with this community that has helped us get through some very trying times as a as a community. Individually, when things happen, when crime hits, when there needs to be police for other things. The number of calls for medical calls continues to grow every single year. And we go to all of those calls, and it's important that we go to those calls because we're not to be viewed as strictly the people who are writing tickets or the people who are arresting people. We're looking to help people however we can to solve problems. We have had an increase in our pistol permit applications, 433%. So we went from 65 applications to 347 applications. Our request for traffic enforcement has increased significantly. We're constantly getting requests, not only to slow down traffic, to assess sightline problems, traffic calming issues that it's taking up a lot of our time. And so we're we're regularly trying to get this accomplished with few officers. The number of stolen vehicles has increased drastically, as we're all aware, a 343% increase over the last five years. So in 2015, we had six cars stolen. In last year, we had 31 cars stolen. Each of those stolen cars, the investigation takes at least 40 hours to investigate. And and we need to investigate those. We need to do as much as we possibly can to find out who is stealing these cars and to prevent that from happening in the future. 40% of our our stolen cars in 2019 were involved in violent crimes. Out of out of jurisdiction, out of our jurisdiction in another jurisdiction, but we need to make sure that we have officers accessible to people. We need to be able to go to events that we are either invited. We need to be able to go to events that we are either invited to, community events that you may not normally see a police officer at. All these things are so detrimental because we want anyone who's in this community, whether they're passing through, whether they live here, whether they work here, to be comfortable reaching out to any one of our members of the police department. And as we all know, that when you know somebody, when you're familiar with somebody, when you've had conversations with somebody, it's that much easier to look for a resource, to look for help, to cooperate with the police, to be compliant, whether it's for traffic or for something else. So, you know, our goal is to be able to do that. And with the numbers that we have, we're not able to do that. We have new developments, you know, in the last few years of Highcroft, Aspen Green, Anthology. We have not been able to go there and have a presence. And those are large communities. They don't know us yet. And the only time we're there now is because when we're called for something. And we're called for a car that was broken into, or a medical call, they don't know us. And it's so important that they do know us and that we're available there for them.
And Chief, I appreciate that color on there. You know, it's, I, I think it's fair to say that we haven't experienced a drop in service, because I know how hard you and the team work, right? But I, I think it's also fair to say that we will probably experience a drop in service at some point in the future because of the call volume. And what I mean by drop in service is when medical calls come in, it may take a little bit longer to get there because of staffing. Or we may not be able to go to everything that we would, we would, and the residents have expected us to go to. And, and those are, those are, those are substantial decisions that the, the chief and this board are going to have to make from a a staffing standpoint, is, is what level of service do we want to provide? And you know, what, what the chief is telling us and what I'm advocating for today is that to maintain the level of service that this community expects, we need to continue to fund officer positions. We don't have to do it today, but we have to do it in the next, over the next coming years to the tune of two to four officers from what it looks like right now, just to continue to maintain the level of service that this town expects. So again, doesn't have to be this year. But in my opinion, it has to be a thoughtful plan over the next couple of years to get to that staffing level. Is that fair, Chief?
That is fair. And, and that is the same conversation we had last year and the same conversation we had the year before. And the worry is that we're not going to be ahead of the growth. We have had a very strange, you know, last 12 months. And I would not take a look at those stats and use those statistics for a number of calls that we've gone on to really predict what it's going to be like next year or the year after. I think we have to look at the growth of calls for service over the years, the growth of the community. And, you know, what are we going to expect next year? What are we going to expect this year if we have concerts, if we have gatherings? It's important for us to be obviously properly staffed so we can keep up with those services.
Yeah.
If I may, I'd like to add.
Station. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
We can't wait too long, Sean, because those numbers that, that we come up with, so that's staffing for the population that we find now in Simsbury. And as you know, for every new police officer we bring in, it takes at least a year before that officer can be on the road. And so if we're three, three down now, and, and the fourth that was in our request is for staffing for office to keep our paperwork flowing, so we don't have to tie up a police officer in the office building. It will help us, if the population stays constant for two or three years, you know, we'll be fine. But if it keeps increasing, we won't be fine three years from now, you know, or two years from now. We'll tend to toward that. Hopefully, we won't have to do that. But we are, you know, we used to have a police officer, at least a half, half a full-time police officer doing traffic control. Just droning streets, people call up, complain of speeding on my street, people, I, you know, run the stop sign, they don't do this, they don't do that. And that was a strong suit that we had. We had, you know, police officers who would, who would patrol those areas, make those stops, talk to the residents, not necessarily issue tickets, but be a presence, which then tends to slow down everybody and, and, and tends to make the whole relationship between the police force and the population a much smoother thing. We don't have anybody doing that today. We should have two, we should have two full-time traffic control officers on the road, and we do not. So it depends on how you look at it. Are we behind or not behind? From my point of view, we are behind. And, and we are losing the concept of, of community policing where where police officers and citizens are, are, you know, friends, are, are part of the same community. They work together. They communicate with each other. They know each other. When they grow apart, and they don't have that communication, they don't get to know each other, then the whole concept of fear comes in. And it's we versus them, and who, who are the cops? Are they bad guys that are going to get us? That whole concept of community policing that Pete Ingerson worked so hard on for many years is slowly getting away from us. And, and I hate to see that happen because it takes a long time to build it back. So it's, it's not, in my eyes, it's not something that we can, we can, you know, do over the next two or three years because we may need two more people by three years from now. Depends on the development in this community, what happens. You know, it, it's, it's, it's pretty easy to work it out. But it's hard to just stay, stay pace with it.
Chief, if you don't mind, a question, you know, when just for, Chief, help me understand that when you use those comparatives, you talk about comparatives to pure, pure towns. I mean, are you strictly basing it upon a population count to your count? Or is there, is there, is there actually a narrative in there that relates to crime as well?
There, there is not. So it's just, it's one sort of real simple way of looking at it. It's, you know, like everything else, it's numbers. It doesn't relate to crime. It doesn't factor in a, a crime component. The FBI for decades has gathered this information annually as just a sort of a base to use. It would be drastically different. You know, our need would be drastically different if we had the crime rate of other communities. You know, maybe we wouldn't, we wouldn't be at a 1.72, which is our comparable town average. Maybe we would have to be at a 2.1. But so, so to answer your question, no, it's just a real basic, it's based on the number of residents.
Okay, so then, so it's fair to say then, and I'm just purely, I'm not fighting, so fair to say then, if you, if in that comparative town where we're being compared against a, there are towns in that that comparison that are also 25,000 people who have much higher crime rates and who have larger police departments to address those crime, those crime rates. Therefore, our number looks, we are, we are underpopulating our department relative to them. Because they need more to address their crime.
Yes, yes. And, but some of our comparative towns are, you know, Avon, South Windsor, Granby, and there's a few other towns that you, they do, the, the crime rates definitely fluctuate.
Okay.
It's just, that's just one driving factor. You know, like I said, there are a couple of other components. One is our, and the community's comfort level with us and our availability. Mr. Long was talking about the traffic enforcement officer. And for almost nine years, Gary Gray was out there.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I know. I haven't been, I haven't been stopped in three years. That's, I mean, that was for three a month.
So, so, so he had the opportunity to, you know, when somebody called in and complained about a traffic issue, he had the opportunity without being sent to investigate a fraud case or an alarm, he had the ability to be there and assess what the issue was. And then touch base with the person who called in, maybe bringing to their attention what the issue was, what we have done for that, speaking with the, with the community. That's what we need to do. And as Mr. Long indicated, not just during the day, Monday through Friday, we need to be able to do that during the evenings when there's almost just as much traffic and as much of a need for that. We haven't been able to go out to visit with the Terrific Village Association for their meetings in years, just because we don't have the personnel available for it. So it's not a matter of because the crime rate is increasing, because it's, it's not. You know, our crime, our crime changes here and there. But when all of a sudden now your detectives are spending 30% of their time on stolen motor vehicles and all the other things that they had been working on have not gone away, something gets put on the back burner.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a chicken and egg, Chris.
I, 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 I get that, Mike. I know, I believe you. And that's, I, I get, I mean, plus the fact that somebody's going to say, if we don't do this, and then look what happens, and something happens, and then if we did something, maybe that thing wouldn't have happened, you know? And that's, that's political optics. I, I kind of, I just go, so I won't, I'll just kind of give, show more of my, not my marked cards, but my thinking is on this that one, I don't think anything you're saying is untrue. I don't think there's validity in anything you're saying. I completely understand that we're understaffed. I completely understand that we're going to be even more understaffed as these build, as the population and town grows. Nobody, nobody, I, I get, I, you know, I get a, 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 a level of comfort and emotional warmth when I pull up to my, drop my kids off at school and I see a police officer there. What that does to me as a parent, I can't even describe to you. You know, with, how that makes me feel driving away after dropping them off. Sadly, we have, we're at that point. But all it stays from, from, it goes back to my earlier sermon, Maria, is that, you know, whether it's this, whether it's the, a police officer, or if it's a parking wreck position, and we've got to get out a plan because, you know, this goes to referendum. The, the town sees two people being added to the, to the, to the, to the, to the budget. And all they see is two bodies, and they think of government, bloat, unions, long-term obligation, and everything else. And, you know, that's, so I think if a, a, an easier way for us to do this is to start scheduling these out so that we can be, we can bake them into our future projections. And we can educate and we can prepare people, prepare ourselves. I, I, I'm not fighting the position. I think it's, it's warranted. I'm just fighting, it is competing with another position, and who wins out first, and the next one, and the next one, and the next one. That's right.
There's some, Mike, go ahead.
Real quick question, Chief. Am I understanding correctly, right now, you're down three officers? And with this new position, you could fund four positions. Is that correct?
We are down three officers right now, so we are authorized for 39. We have 36 officers. I didn't understand the last part of your.
So, so if we funded another position, you could hire four police officers?
Correct. So then, yeah, so we would be authorized to have 40 sworn, correct?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, you were down three, but three of them aren't in the budget, this would be one new person. This would actually give you a total of four, if this were approved.
Right, yeah. No, they, you are, you are correct. And, you know, as we spoke about earlier, as Wendy said, the, the market is very difficult for hiring right now. And we, you know, like a lot of, a lot of towns are extremely selective. You know, we are looking for a police officer who has all the same desires and skills and abilities that we all want.
Yeah, and, and the values, and I get it.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the, you know, the officer who wants to do, you know, A, B, and C, that is just rarely occurring here. You know, somebody who wants to come and ride a motorcycle here, as, you know, we're, we don't have motorcycles. You know, we don't have officers on horses. So, you know, we, we're very particular. Plus, it's very difficult right now. The pool is limited, and there are only a few that really rise to the top.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief.
I just want to say one thing, Mike Payne. The number that we are looking for is 42. Michael Payne, are you? Sorry, did I lose you?
No, you did not. I, I heard you that, that you want to get up to 42.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's the number.
Let me just briefly frame how I'm looking at this this year. Chief, I thought last year, you and your team did a really nice job coming to our meeting, presenting the, the story and, and giving us data. And I was right there with you. And I think I could get right there with you on this request too. But I, I do want to understand more of the story and more of the data holistically than purely the pure capita number. And I also want to, yeah, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but obviously, hiring a police officer is an expensive resource. And it's, it's actually shocking that their, their salary is actually less than half of the cost of the entire, you know, the entire resource. And I always am interested if there are other ways that we can accomplish the same goal without having a police officer, whether it could be a, whether it's a, a social worker or even a, a traffic engineer. I, I would want to make sure that that's explored. Again, I can get there, but I'm not there right now, you know, this year on this request.
So the, the driving factor for all of this is, is not the per capita number. Again, it's just a base that is, that is used. Some people like looking at numbers that way. You know, in, in the request from the Police Commission was also another option, which was an accreditation specialist. So right now, we have an accreditation specialist. She is a police officer. And I like the idea of a, a police officer doing our accreditation, because it's a really good match. It's like the, you know, having the, the academia with, with the practical. You know, it, it meshes really well. So, but one option is to hire a civilian for our accreditation specialist. And then the officer who is assigned to that now would, would be reassigned to another position. So it's the same number of sworn officers, but we're filling one current task or assignment that is basically a full-time assignment to a civilian, a non-sworn person. And again, you know, we have, you know, X number of people assigned to different shifts for patrol, for the, the whole function of patrol, which is the response to emergencies, the non-emergencies, they do a lot of investigations, the presence, traffic enforcement, all that. You pull one person for a training assignment that day, you may have to then fill that position again. You have a person sick, injured, taking a vacation time, and then you have somebody trained, you may have to fill one to two of those positions again. So there's a, a big juggling game going on to try to limit the amount of overtime, the amount of people who are working, you know, in excess of eight hours per day. We want to make sure that the officers, officers are as, as fresh as can be. So, you know, those are some of the driving reasons as opposed to the, the per capita number. And really, the, the number one is so we can have people who are available to interact with our community, to teach classes to people, to meet with groups, to understand what their concerns are, to be able to make our streets a whole lot safer. And anybody who's been driving, you know, around the last six or eight months, has probably seen driving behaviors have changed drastically. And we're trying to get a handle on that. It's a very slow, slow process.
And I just want to reiterate, this is our request, the Police Commission budget, is to maintain our current services. We are asking to, for these officers to maintain the services we are providing now. We're not looking to have a bloated budget and plan for a future increase. This is looking at our current needs now. Whether we can staff the certification specialist, the traffic control officer, these are our current needs to maintain our current services.
Is it, is it worth talking about or looking at whether hiring officers would, to serve, to make, you know, fill some of this need, whether it's meeting with, with community groups or going on calls that don't require a sworn officer? And I know we're not going to solve that right now, but I just appreciate the, you know, understanding whether that's something that's been discussed.
So, so we have looked at that a little bit, you know, over the last few years, and, and even some other drastic steps, which we are actually taking right now only because of the pandemic, about accepting calls over the phone. And which I just, I, I don't like because it's extremely impersonal. And, you know, we end up discovering things. Um, and which I just, I, I don't like because it's extremely impersonal and, you know, we end up discovering things when we go to people's homes, whether it's, it's needs that they have, information that they may need. Uh, so, you know, in the eyes of a, a civilian responding to, to something like that, I, I don't, I don't see where we're going to get a, a large benefit of that. Um, I think people are expecting police officers to arrive when they have, uh, crime-related issues and not, um, you know, so not sort of a, a, a citizen on, on patrol site type of, uh, concept.
Yeah, they don't want their state farm agent, right? They want their, they want a police officer.
They do.
Yeah.
Thanks for the conversation.
Thank you.
So where do we go from here?
I was just gonna ask.
It's a big number. I don't know, man, do we want to keep going through the list and talking about the other stuff? I mean, how, how do you want to do it?
Um, let's just quick time check. It's nine o'clock.
Yep.
Um, I, I, um, how are others feeling? I don't want to get to a point where we're not going to be productive.
Well, we still have a couple other items in the agenda that we have to get through, right?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be quick.
But I still want to, I still want to see impact of pulling some things out of here. If we ever going to do that at the next meeting, that's fine.
Um, we're getting into a time issue and that we, we're supposed to present this, not
I know.
Tomorrow, but the next Tuesday, right? So.
On my birthday.
True, Sean, but I thought we were waiting on some funding as well. I mean, it seems like there's some other things that are up in the air.
Which ones?
Yeah, but federal funding, I, you know, I don't know if we'll have an answer, um.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't budget with the federal funding in mind.
Yeah, I think that's sort of going to be one of those things that we probably work out a little bit further into the budgeting process. And that has happened on occasion where we've had some things that have been uncertain, like the teacher's contribution, um, I'm sorry, the contribution to the teacher's retirement system. So there have been a few things that have evolved once we've sort of passed along the budget. Um, I think that'll probably be one of them this year.
Yeah. And because it's a one-time item, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I think if it was changed to the ECS formula, Jackie, I think we would wait for that, right?
Okay.
Something like that. It's a good question though, to clarify that at this late hour.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, is, you know, we are sort of winding down the operating budget discussion. I know we were hoping to reserve, uh, most Wednesday night for capital and CNR. You know, do folks have a little bit of energy left up to try and, you know, potentially, um, settle on or whittle this list down further? Or would people like to think on it for the evening? We could email this out and then maybe you start fresh with it on Wednesday. It's, it's really whatever your preferences, if folks are feeling pretty burnt out and tired.
Well, I guess I, I would agree with Wendy. I'd like to see this, um, without some of these items, I, without scrolling down. I mean, I just, this is really hard to have this, um, the mill rate increase and again, not knowing what our capital decisions are going to be. Or impact.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I don't want to say, I, I would try to, I'd like to see this without the police officer. Sorry. To the commission and the chief, but, um, the, I feel, and I don't want to get back into that too much, but we, we did the deputy chief last year and added to leadership. Um, and I would, don't know the results, if that resulted in any, you know, efficiencies or, but, you know, better management. Um, along with having three open positions that are already budgeted, correct? The three open positions?
They're, they're already budgeted.
Yeah, so those are budgeted and we don't even have bodies in those yet. So we're asking for a fourth person without seeing how the force operates with those three bodies. Um, so my feeling is that I, that would be something I would hold off on.
And the only thing I'll say to that, I mean, Wendy, part of the problem is, is because we're always going to be down staff, there's an approved number and there's this, there's a actual people in seats number, right? And I think we need to look at that overall. And the challenge is, is, is this is, this I think has been a new quandary for us, right, chief, for the last few years and that we've had more vacancy than I think we've traditionally enjoyed with more leave and again, with benefits, et cetera. And it puts substantial pressure on the overtime budget and it puts substantial pressure on the operating model, right?
Yeah, and, and because of those situations, we've had to pull, there was one time where we had to redirect our detectives for two weeks at a time to start filling in on the, uh, patrol shift. So they would, they, we took them away from the, the detective assignment. For two weeks at a time, they rotated just because our numbers were down. You know, and, and if, if the third, the thirty-nine would work, if we were guaranteed that everybody would be here every single day and we didn't have to remove anybody for training, um, and people didn't take vacation time, it matches up really well. But we're, we're never at that. And it was actually rare that we're ever at that full number anyways.
Yeah, so there's a, there's an expenditure impact and there's a budgeting impact. And I think we need to, Maria, right, spend some time looking at that because I'm sure you've got some creative solutions up your sleeve there.
Yeah, no, I would agree. It's something that I've mentioned, um, to the chief. Uh, I think Amy Moss and I have talked a bit about it too and have flagged it as a future assignment. Um, it was a budgeting practice we used to use, uh, way back when I was in Savannah for our police department, our fire department, um, our sanitation department, where we would essentially, um, estimate what our true vacancy rate was. And when I'm referring to the vacancy rate, that's, you know, folks who have left due to things like retirement or, um, or resignation. I'm not folks who are simply out on leave. And then based on sort of historical, um, analysis of, of that true vacancy rate, we would, um, have, you know, the force, if you will, um, authorized at a certain number within our position control system. But then for budgeting purposes, we would back out, um, the vacancy rate that was appropriate. Um, so let's say maybe, I mean, this is just, I'm making up a number right now, but let's say that, you know, we knew the vacancy rate was going to be ten, you know, so we had, you know, our authorized position, say four hundred people, the vacancy rate is ten, so we budgeted for three ninety. But again, it was a way to ensure that our authorized numbers stayed up while they were always recruiting, right? It was always a constant exercise to recruit, but we weren't essentially, um, paying for, for salaries that we weren't going to then incur. Um, and so the chief actually just brought me a really nice draft analysis today, which I think is a, is a really good first step in, in getting a good handle on that for us. And again, it just might be a budgeting technique for us to keep our authorized numbers up higher than what they are.
The downside to that is you go and enjoy end of the year savings that we've traditionally enjoyed, right?
Right, that could potentially cut back on some of that, that's correct.
You come much closer to the overall budgeted numbers, which is a good thing, so.
That is correct.
It's a policy.
One of my concerns was taxing people for a position we can't sell.
Well, yeah, Eric, but that, I mean, again, eh, any business, any enterprise that hires people has this challenge. This is, this doesn't just exist in the Cincinnati Police Department.
I know. It's, it's not targeted at the Cincinnati Police Department.
Yeah, but we're not, but Sean, the difference is we're not paying, I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're realizing the cost regardless of filled or not, now, in, in our model versus a private model. You know, that that's.
I disagree. We, if we don't spend it, it goes to the general fund.
It still goes to a tax to the, to the, to the, to the resident though.
I agree. And you, you still pay a hundred dollars for a license for Microsoft Office, whether it took them soft, ten software engineers or twenty software engineers. I mean, the cost of, the cost of a good doesn't go down based on their staffing model either.
Could we look at what this changed, just so we can keep this going?
Right. Are we scrolling? Is that what you're saying, Jackie?
Yeah.
We're scrolling, we're scrolling.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's a point, it's a point one-three to the overall budget. It goes from seven or three-point, I think seven-three to three-point six percent net increase.
What was the dollar before?
A hundred and two, a hundred and two, a hundred and four.
I think that's right.
So, okay. And now median home, what is the value, what is the home price that we're talking about?
Three hundred thousand.
A little over, I think.
Yeah, a little over three hundred thousand. I believe, is that correct, Amy?
Yeah.
And again, this is, this has pulled all the pension assumptions out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the thirty-seven point three-five is just over where we were two years ago. We were at thirty-seven point three-two. Um, and based on our current year mill rate, there were, I believe, three towns in our area whose mill rates did exceed ours. Um, again, that might change this year depending on other people's proposed budgets, but you know, I'd say we were probably, um, in the middle of the pack for our neighbors.
I'm just still, you know, we still have people out of work and we still have businesses that ask for tax waivers. So, you know, I just feel like this is a really hard time to be pushing on increases. And again, we're only taking this part of the budget today.
Right.
Um, can.
You guys keep saying that though, that, that, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong though, the debt service line item is not going to change on Wednesday.
Well, this year though, you're just talking this year, right?
If we keep it under the eight, if we keep it under this, the seven percent, it shouldn't change, right?
Right. I mean, that's, but there's no different than any other year, guys. The only thing that would force that to change is if we do Latimer and we go to eight percent and do fifteen or ten or whatever. That's the only thing that can change that number.
Right, but that's what we're looking at, isn't it?
Yeah, if we do Latimer.
But it changes it and how, I guess my point is it doesn't change the tax bill this year. It could potentially change it.
But it doesn't just matter this year, or Jackie, if you're kidding me, it's not just this year.
Yeah, I, that, I have, yeah, exactly, Wendy. And so, I mean, so next year, we, I, we have, I, I think to, we, I, 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 in my mind, I've been looking at this in the totality of it's Latimer and Meadowwood are, have to be factored into this to give me the true perspective from which to pull back from. That's how I'm, how I'm filtering this, this budget. Because we look at this and we talk, so if we put the police officer back in, I, I, I'm, I hate, it's the, I, you know, I don't want to make about the police officer, just put the body back in, right, in my mind. That's a hundred dollars on a, that's a hundred dollars on a three, on a three hundred thousand dollar home. Um, but that's not only who we have in town. You know, we've got, we've got six in one million dollar homes. So you take the three hundred and take the hundred and it goes to three or five hundred with those other two projects on that home. You compound that over ten years and you take that person's tax bill from twenty to thirty thousand dollars, you know. There, there are big numbers that spiral out here, folks, and that's what.
I, it's not awesome on me, Chris. Yeah, my point though is, guys, I'm not dismissing it, but it's a one percent increase next year. The capital, but if we go from se- seven this year to eight percent, eight next year, it's a one percent increase. And I, and I'm not saying that's inconsequential, but everything else holding flat, it's one percent. And it, the whole capital discussion is important, yes.
It is.
Combining that with a police officer or library materials.
But Sean, we're also doing this increase in a year where we have two point nine percent growth.
Yep.
And there's no certainty for that next year. So.
I agree.
Like my colleagues have said, we're looking at the whole picture here.
I, I don't disagree, Jackie. It's, um, but you know, the challenge is, I think we're, I mean, if we did nothing but the bare minimum, right, Maria, we're at.
Right, my budget was, um, the bare minimum without these items on the right. Uh, initial projection was point one-seven with some revised health insurance and debt service information we received. Ultimately was a point two. Um, so it went from thirty-six to forty-two dollars.
Forty-two, forty-two dollars.
Right.
That's without pension and out mortality.
Without pension, without much mortality and without, um, the column that says assumptions on your screen, right? So that would just be like bare bones, flat.
The Spirit Council, uh, the Spirit Council is in there, the de-escalation council was in, the de-escalation is in there too.
None of those are in there.
None of those were in the, um, original budget that I proposed for that point two mills.
The one that resulted in a forty-two dollar
Correct.
increase, that, that wasn't in it?
That wasn't in it. That was just bare bones, maintaining what we have.
I'm, I'm, I, I think the, the points worrying about year two are, are more than valid. But we got to get through this year first. And if, I, I am very concerned if we don't add a position or the, the things that were on this list, including the police officer this year, we back ourselves in. Now, we don't know what's going to happen with our capital. And if I am correct, even if we authorize Latimer Lane this year, we might see the bond impact next year, but probably not until the year after. By the time they actually start the construction.
I think that's right. I think there's a tranche for the, the other capital this year, right, Amy? That was the dark green. And then the, the dark pink was the first issuance of Latimer the year after that. And then another issuance after that.
Right, so whatever year you start the project and the bonding is affected by the year after that. So if the project was started in twenty-two, the bond impact will be twenty-three.
Right, and there was two chunks. So it'd be one borrowing twenty-three, one borrowing twenty-four. Again, guys, I, trust me, I'm not making light of this, but, um, we do Latimer, I mean, it, it's a one percent increase to the overall budget and it puts substantial pressure on the capital budgets. And by de facto, it also puts it on the operating budget. I, I, I don't disagree with you, but if we start mingling Latimer with eight thousand dollars of de-escalation trading, we're never going to make a decision.
So I, I'm wondering if it's going to make sense for us to talk about, you know, capital at our next meeting and then come back to our operating budget and start making some changes with those further assumptions baked in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
Think you're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Well, because we have to take that capital budget and get, go, get across six years at eight percent, right, at least. So there, there's a lot that can't be in there.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then decide if there's a corresponding impact on the CNR budget.
Yep.
So with Wednesday's meeting, we are starting half an hour earlier and we don't have any other agenda items. So I think we'll have, you know, more time to focus. Um, anything else on the operating, uh, before we move on on the agenda tonight?
So just, can we clarify where we're leaving this? We're leaving this as we, there's really no consensus anywhere on this, so we're going to have to re-engage the conversation from this point?
Well, do we have any consensus on the police officer? I think some are in and some are out.
I, I, I would like to see everything was on this list before we took the police officer out.
Yeah.
Left on.
Yeah.
Um, Sean, my concern is that we don't have anything with the pension or mortalities in right now.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that again.
Okay.
So I, you know, again, I guess we've got to decide, we've got to rank our priorities. And if mortality and pension are our priorities, then we, we start with that and then we start cutting other things if we're not comfortable with what the answer was.
And I'll.
You, you realize that we're, we're, I mean, I, I, I think I'm correct in saying this, Maria, correct? But we're adding bodies into, we're adding bodies which then go into the, the pension formula, which is completely wrong. And so.
Actually, not for, not for the parks position. The parks position, the parks position, the DB plan is closed. Um, for the police position that you guys discussed, um, that person would have an option between the DC or the DB plan, but all new hires are going into that lower tier, um, for that new, uh, new DB plan. So it would be a lesser benefit. Um, the assessor position, because it's temporary and it's under, um, the pension eligibility threshold, um, that particular position would not be eligible for pension. So the only one that would have a choice of a DB plan would be the police position.
So Sean, kind of back to your question before, how's this thing keep moving around? It's by, by putting more people into it and not addressing the, the cost that that contained it. That is how it moves forward. That's how it keeps on getting.
I agree, Chris, but honestly, this is the third time I've quote-unquote addressed the pension in my tenure on this board. So, you know, it, 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 it's frustrating as all hell that this problem keeps happening and it's nobody's fault. It's the problem with these stupid plans.
You're right.
I agree. I just feel that we did talk about it last year and we did kick the can to this year. So I do think we need to do something.
Agreed.
To hold our side.
I mean, if we don't, our finance will, so I think we should look at our budget with, with these assumptions baked into it.
I agree. Let's do it.
That's a good question to get raised tomorrow night on the Board of Finance meets.
Yes. I will be there. I encourage others to attend. Um, any other remarks before we move on? Um, again, I think when we reconvene, it would be great to look at it with the pension in there, with the police officer in there. Um, and then we can talk about what to, uh, what to remove. Okay.
You guys want the pension, um, just so that I have it ready for next time? Do you want it with the mortality or half the mortality?
Half.
Half.
Would be my vote.
Okay. I am going to, uh, move on to appointments and resignations. Is there a motion retroactive to February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one to accept the resignation of Gina Morgan as a regular member of the Culture Parks and Rec Commission?
So moved.
Second with all, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, was there any feedback on the minutes from, uh, our last meeting? Uh, so this would be a regular meeting on February twenty-second and special meeting on March second. Was there any feedback on either of those minutes? Okay. Any selectmen, uh, liaison or subcommittee reports? Even Wendy's not doing one tonight, this is amazing. Um, we already talked a little bit about the tipping cheese, anything else under communication that anyone wanted to raise? Uh, my understanding, we will be having a presentation this spring on the Aquarian, um, watering changes that are coming down the pipeline, so that'll be impacting our residents. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, yep. Jackie, got it.
Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.